Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Antellus, it's Arminio.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Northstein.
Here.
Mr. Poy.
Here.
Mr. Preziosso.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted April 18, 2014, one at Old Schools, two, Home News Tribune, three, Cranberry Press, four, filed with the Clerk of the Municipality. And at this time, we will have reports from our student board member. Mr. Poy?
Could you? Oh, I'm sorry. Daydreaming here.
Good evening, everyone. So first, I'd like to say that the Monroe Township High School Drama Club just wrapped up its spring musical, "The Wedding Singer," and we would like to congratulate all performers, crew members, and Mr. Burns for their outstanding performance. Sixteen DECA members will be departing for Atlanta, Georgia on May 3 to attend the International Career Development Conference. This year, MTHS DECA has made school history with its most qualifiers yet. We wish them the best of luck in Georgia, and DECA would like to thank the Monroe Township Board of Education for their continuous support and encouragement. Tuesday, May 6 and Wednesday, May 7, students at the high school can pledge to never text and drive during their lunches. MTHS is happy to promote safety to their students and encourage them to stay responsible on the roads. After you pledge, students can receive a free wristband. May 9 is the junior prom, and the high school will be closing at a half-day session. Oaktree's work on their community garden will begin on May 10. The Fellowship of Christian Athletes at the high school will be hosting a school-wide ultimate frisbee tournament after school on May 15. Teams are encouraged to join, and 100 percent of the profits will go towards Mikey Nichols on his road to recovery. And lastly, AP testing starts at the high school next Monday and will continue until May 15.
Very much. And at this time, number six on the agenda is the budget, the public budget hearing and final adoption of the 2014-2015 school budget. Dr. Hamilton, Dr. Gorman, and Mr. Gorski will present.
Good evening. Thank you. We're going to just ask Mike Gorski if he will surmise where we are in our current status with our public budget and then ask the Board to approve it accordingly.
Thank you, Doctor. The feedback from the preliminary budget hearing was such to make no changes to the preliminary budget and to recommend that to the Board of Education for adoption tonight as the final budget. Some highlights are as follows. The budget process began late last summer with a board philosophy meeting on what's important to maintain in the budget, what considerations should be taken into consideration for next year. Certainly taxes and the community's sensitivity to taxation is among the top. And we also had to consider about 200 kids additional expected in the district for 14-15, at least six buildings that need significant roof address, state mandates for additional buses, vans, park readiness for a new series of testing coming forward, all of which had to be worked into this budget. Unfortunately, Monroe State Aid Award came in only very slightly higher, but the same small percentage of the overall budget as the prior year. And that's approximately 3.25 percent of all revenues comes from state aid. The district is receiving 60 percent of our aid award from the 2009-2010 school year, but yet is educating over 800 additional students. That's approximately another school to educate with 60 percent of the revenues we had from the state five years ago. The Board's been on a vision to reduce over adequacy spending. We presented slides last time that showed a significant slope downward over the last four years in over adequacy spending. Administrative costs have been linear while the state allows an increase every year due to inflation, but the district has toed the line there. And the best, one of the best highlights is the tax consequence of all these additions. We have, for the first time in 17 years, a tax reduction comparing the average assessed home for 14-15 to the average assessed home for 13-14. Taxes are going down on that average assessed home by over $114. Even if there was no bond referendum money used, as the Board recommended, $2.5 million of bond surplus be applied against the debt service tax levy to reduce taxes, taxes still would be going down about $60. This is not a blip in the pan, so to speak. This has been the Board's vision for the last four years. You can do a lot of different things to manipulate any one particular budget year, but when you have four years of steady decreases in the amount of taxes that are being raised and you have four years of steady decreases in over adequacy spending and you responsibly address the needs of facilities and bus replacements that can easily get kicked down the road for someone else to worry about, that's responsible stewardship of the community's tax dollars and a very wise strategic plan in place by the Superintendent and the Board of Education. So if there's no questions by the Board, I will go ahead and read the resolution. It is recommended that the members of the Board of Education approve the following amounts in resolution for the 14-15 final budget. Be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the 14-15 final general fund budget be adopted in the amount of $101,673,515 and a final general fund local tax levy in the amount of $88,859,549, inclusive of the allowable adjustment for health care costs of $506,743, and a final special revenue fund in the amount of $953,523, and a final debt service budget in the amount of $10,477,116, and a final debt service local tax levy in the amount of $7,139,140, whereby the final 14-15 budget totals $113,104,000, and whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts and whereas such state aid amounts are for the 14-15 categorical special education aid, $2,48,517, and for the 14-15 categorical security aid is $92,501, and for the 14-15 categorical transportation aid is $496,510, and for the 14-15 debt service aid is $682,635, and for the 14-15 other state aid consisting of park readiness aid of $58,980 and per pupil grant aid of $58,980, and whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has estimated a state aid amount pursuant to application, and for the 14-15, the estimated extraordinary aid amount is $214,453, and whereas the state's failure to fully fund the School Funding Reform Act of 2008, as well as other factors, has provided insufficient financial support for programs and services contained in the base budget necessitating the application of $804,098 of unused spending authority to be included in the base budget, and that said needs will be completed by the end of this budget year and will not be deferred or incrementally completed over a longer time, and whereas the school district bylaw 0147, policy 3440, policy 4440, and NJAC 6A 23B 1.2B provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allotted for such travel and expense reimbursement for the 14-15 school year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby establishes the school district travel maximum for the 14-15 school year at the final sum of $158,422, and be it further resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure that the maximum amount is not exceeded. And now therefore let it be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary file the required documents with the Executive County Superintendent.
Mr. Chiarella, second by Mr. Kaufman. Is there any comments or questions by any member of the Board of Education?
I can't see you. Okay, it's fine. The total revenue increase, or the change, is that 3.17, Mr. Gorski?
The total increase in the budget from last year for all funds is $3,477,508.
And is that a 3.17 percent increase?
It is.
And the, so we're going from a local tax levy from 2013 to 2014 of $85,818,172?
Yes, ma'am.
To $88,859,549 million?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct. Okay. And most of the, fortunately, we had some bond money, about $2.5 million that has been put into this budget?
Yes, ma'am.
As well as a surplus of approximately $900,000 or a little under $900,000? I think it was eight.
The surplus is, for the general fund, $4,987,830, and that's mandated by statute to be applied to the 14-15 school year.
Mm-hmm.
And for the debt service fund, $155,341, that debt service surplus resulted as a result of our refinancings.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, since this is the public budget hearing, we will open the floor to any comments that you might have in regard to the budget. It will be just on the budget public forum, and we will adhere to our three-minute limit. So if anybody would like to come to speak about the budget, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Bob Zaglarsky, 162 Tournament Drive. Actually, I wish to express my concern in regard to something that's not in the school budget as far as I can determine from the handouts that I've seen and the user-friendly budget. By the way, there are no handouts, right, for the budget tonight? It's something that should not really have a negative effect on taxes, but it is something that should have a positive effect on the learning environment for students. At the last board meeting, we all learned from a conversation between Board Member Poy and School Business Administrator Gorski that a project which would have been funded in great part by the state of New Jersey through a regular operating grant or a rod grant would not be pursued, at least at this time, and I'm not sure which is the case, whether it's going to be pursued later or we're just giving up on that project. Mr. Gorski explained the project was not a high priority, or it wasn't as a higher priority as the other projects, which are actually in the budget, and I fully understand that position. And maybe after I speak, Mr. Gorski can tell us what projects are actually in the budget. I understand that other facilities projects, especially those concerning the expansion of classroom space, are more urgent. However, the project I'm talking about is entitled "Partial Window Replacement and Associated Hazardous Abatement at Monroe Township Middle School," with the total project cost of over $1 million. However, since the state is not committed to the grant, I'm sorry, however, since the state has committed to grant the district $400,000, the cost to the district is really only $600,000. So students win because the integrity of the envelope of the building is improved, and taxpayers win because the state is willing to give us an additional $400,000 in state aid if we can come up with that local share of $600,000. And I understand why you can't. I hope we do not lose the funding because we cannot come up with that local share, at least at this time. As I have mentioned before, if Mayor and Council would only share with the Board of Education a small portion of the millions of dollars in sewer connection fee surplus, this project could get done this summer. The township will be using $5.3 million, I repeat, $5.3 million of sewer connection fee surplus in their 2014 budget, not for any specific purpose, but as a miscellaneous revenue. The total amount used by the township over the past five years exceeds $46 million. It is a shame that the township could not have shared $600,000 with the Board of Education this year so that the window project could have been completed this summer. I recommend that, I recommend that the Board pursue this issue with Mayor and Council, and let's not leave $400,000 of state aid for our children on the table. Thank you. Unless it's in the budget already.
Mr. Gorski, would you like to respond to that?
Yes. Evening, Mr. Zaglarsky. The projects that are in the budget from a facility standpoint are as follows. Consistent with the Board's installment approach to fixing roofs within the budget, we are going to replace the Monroe Township Middle School instructional wing roof. That is a net cost to the district of $1,032,020, taking full advantage of a state rod grant for a 40 percent share contribution from the state. As you probably know, that is on a reimbursement basis. The district has to expend the money and then fill out a great deal of paperwork to get reimbursed from the state. The other projects are to create internal space at the Monroe Township Middle School. This is what we refer to as stopgap measures. $250,000 is appropriated for that purpose. Those stopgap measures were a district high priority facilities item. We applied for a rod grant for those, and unfortunately, despite all the hype that came out from the state about these rod grants encouraging districts to apply, those were Tier Two classified and denied. In the Building Grounds Transportation Committee meeting many months ago, we discussed the long-range facility plan in part and some of the more pressing projects in the district. It was through the facility director's recommendation that we applied for and the committee recommended to the Board several different projects. One of them was more extravagant than the more critical needs of the others, and that was the window replacement project at the Monroe Township Middle School. These windows are not very energy efficient but are still suitable for use. Any hazardous material is contained within the caulk, and if it's not disturbed, will not be released, according to our experts. And unfortunately, there was just not enough budget resources with the tight cap to consider that project for the 14-15 budget. However, we are optimistic from what we're hearing that more money will be available for state grants next year, and we will certainly review with the Building Grounds Transportation Committee and then recommend to the full Board any other grants that we deem feasible for the 15-16 school year.
So if I understand you correctly, we will lose that $400,000 that we could have gotten had we completed that project. Then I fully understand and agree with what you're saying. I'm not in any way, shape, or form criticizing you, but I think it's just the fact that we lose that money because we don't have the local share.
I want to say yes, but I'm a little uncomfortable with lose because we probably will be able to reapply in 15-16, even if it's for that same project.
Thank you.
One other, one other topic that you brought up, the sewer connection fees. The Board recognizes and appreciates your passion about this project, and we've-
Oh, I see you have a prepared statement. Very good.
Just a few notes that I've received today from an attorney, not a very elaborate piece, but the Board, in recognizing and overturning every stone to address the facility needs here in the district, whether it be rod grants, as you brought up, or collaboration with the township, in the past township has donated a parcel of land where Oaktree School exists. Dr. Hamilton, Board President Kathy Koloponowicz and I contacted Wayne Hamilton from the municipal, he's the municipal business official, and we expressed your recommendation that some of the sewer connection fees be shared with the Board of Education to offset future capital needs, either renovations or perhaps potential bond referendum in the future or reconfigurations of that nature. Mr. Hamilton said that he did not feel that that was a possibility because of the local finance board statutes that govern the use of sewer connection fees. He then was kind enough to refer the matter to the MTUA, Monroe Township Utility Authority's attorneys, a gentleman by the name of Greg Pasquale from the firm of Shaian, S-H-A-I-N, Schaefer and Raffanello.
Yeah, that's township attorney.
Yes, yes, sir.
Joel Sha.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pasquale was kind enough to call me today and share some of his time on this topic with me, and accord to Mr. Pasquale, the school district is not eligible for any of that money, and he referenced the following statutes, and I'll be happy to email this to you later. NJSA 40A:4-62, which states in part, sewer connection fees must be used by the MTUA, and NJSA 40A:4-35, township must book surplus in budget as miscellaneous income. According to this attorney, the use of those fees, if they were to be shared for the, to the school district for the purposes that you outlined, as creative as they are, it would be a circumvention of what you probably know as an impact fee, and the attorney said these particular two statutes prevent it. We were disappointed to hear that, but that's, that's the advice that we were provided by the township's attorney.
Well, I'm not surprised that they can come up with some legal jargon to prevent it, but I'd like to say that when I was a school business administrator, the township government helped the school district with construction projects that especially had to do with health and safety. One was a project where they funded the repair of a pedestrian bridge that was on Board of Education property to the tune of $100,000. We also, and they sent a check to the Board of Education from the township government. They also sent another-
I'm going to have to thank you for your comments.
...$100,000 for a project that had to do with the renovations of a soccer field. So money can move from township to Board of Education. It can. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Joe Castelluccio, 20 Ashley Court, Monroe Township. Good evening, everyone. Again, I want to understand this. You went to 2 percent cap on the budget, but because of exemptions, it's probably somewhere around 3.5 percent or maybe a little bit more than that. And, you know, back in August, when people were talking about the budget, what I don't understand is why, when we know that we have exemptions, why we don't just go to a 2 percent cap, including the exemptions. The exemptions just allow us to do things to make us go higher, but on the other hand, it would make more sense to me if we were really trying to tighten up the purse strings and help the taxpayers, we would go just to a 2 percent cap, including exemptions. And again, I'm throwing that number out there. If I'm incorrect, then tell me, but that's the way I understand it. The second, while you're checking, I'll just throw this out because I want to stay within my three minutes. The MT, the UTA, the Monroe Township Utility Authority that you were just mentioning is not part of my question, but doesn't the township own them? So if the township owns them, why can't, it goes back to Bob's question about why that money is so segregated, it's part of the township's money, but I don't want to waste my time on that, I just want to throw that out you. The last thing is that, and I've mentioned this before, what I don't understand is that we have a state of New Jersey that apparently gives money back to certain areas of Middlesex County that are comparable to us, as far as I'm concerned, South Brunswick, East Brunswick, Old Bridge. They're giving back some $4,000 per student, I believe, in Old Bridge, and similar numbers across other towns. We have a 14th Amendment that says equal protection under the law. That's the U.S. Constitution. If we have equal protection under the law, why are the children of Monroe Township not given the same amount of money as somebody in Old Bridge, East Brunswick? And no one's been able to explain that. Side-step it, you're going to get legal jargon here and there, but it's all nonsense because what we need to do is get someone, someone in the community, someone to do, you know, some pro bono work, and tell why, tell the state why we're not getting the same amount of funds back per student in Monroe Township under the Constitution that tells them equal protection. And that's what it's for. Everybody's supposed to get the same amount back. It has nothing to do with whether, you know, you're talking about underdeveloped areas or, you know, poverty-stricken areas. I'm talking about socioeconomic areas that are comparable to Monroe Township, and we really need to look at that because every year when we come here, we have a budget meeting and we say the same excuses, the state's not giving us money, so we have to do this, and the state's not giving us money, we have to do that. We have those laws in place. Why are we not going after them?
Actually, Mr. Gorski has a report on that later in his business report.
The 14th, the equal protection?
Well, it's why our, it has to do with our quest for getting more equitable funding for Monroe.
But this is very specific. This is, the quest is there already. We already have the ammunition for the quest. We don't need to make up a new one.
No.
And we have it right, right there. It's called the U.S. Constitution.
Okay. Sir, the time is up, but I did want to discuss and answer your questions about the cap. The way the cap calculation works is it takes your preceding year general fund tax levy, which is $85,818,172. It adds to it an automatic cap adjustment for enrollment.
That's the 2 percent?
No, not yet, not yet.
Okay.
Bear with me. So it takes your preceding year general fund levy, automatically adjusted for enrollment increases. This year, despite having 200 additional students, the state does the trend line, and we got $13,895 additional cap relief for all the enrollment here in the district. So that, the sum of last year's levy plus the $13,895 comes to $85,832,067. That then gets adjusted by 2 percent. That comes to $87,548,708. Then there is another cap adjustment for health care costs above what's been experienced in the state health benefits plan. The district was eligible for $506,743, leaving the total cap to be $88,055,451. So as you can see, these, these cap adjustments are really very immaterial. We're not getting anything nearly for automatic enrollment adjustment, even though this district at 200 additional students spends well in excess of $3 million for that line item. And the health insurance increase is a whole other issue that we could talk about for a while, but for the last few years, you know, Chapter 78 and prior to that was the 1.5 percent of salary that was mandated to be, to be collected from employees. All that money that was collected from employees has gone towards health insurance increases. So, you know, there's certainly an eligibility for that $506,000 to offer cap relief, and that takes us to the cap as we discussed.
No, my only question was, I know, I know about the caps and the cap reliefs. My point is you don't have to take them. They're there, it doesn't mean you have to take them.
I disagree with that comment.
Okay.
The one's automatic.
You have to take them?
The one is automatic. You can turn down the health insurance costs and-
All right.
And you could, but again, the board philosophy meeting was to go to cap.
Okay.
The second topic was you wanted to talk about state aid, the constitutional requirements for thorough and efficient education. We'll get to that a little bit later.
Okay, because I'm, you know, the thing is, it's the U.S. Constitution, and as far as I know, you can make all the laws you want at the state level, you can't circumvent the U.S. Constitution. That's what it's there for.
Disagree. The U.S. Constitution- Disagree. The U.S. Constitution yields to the state on this particular issue.
Well, it can, but you could also make a case why it shouldn't. You know, you have to make those cases. You just can't buckle like a cheap camera every time somebody comes across it. Well, you can't do that. Can't is the word. That's the most motivating word. Can't means you can.
Anyone else from the public? Wishing to speak on the budget?
Good evening, Dr. Hamilton, members of the Board. My name is Mike Yacharsky. I currently reside at 25 Avenue K. I'm here just to clarify an issue. My daughter currently attends Monroe Township Middle School in the 7th grade. And what I'm trying to clarify is, at the beginning of the school year, she has a 504 plan that currently requires her to have an FM system in her classes. Now, the 7th grade classes are currently wired for the FM system. What I'm getting at is that I'm trying to find out if the budget that's coming up will allow funding for the FM system to be installed in the 8th grade classes. Am I in par with that?
You are in par, Madam President.
Oh, sure.
You are in par, and yes, that is accounted for in the special services budget.
Yes, and that's where I'm going with this, doctor. We have been communicating with Ms. Ruela since the beginning of the school year. And our last communication was that the FM system will be placed at Monroe Township Middle School for the 2014 school budget. Is that still correct?
Yes.
So, the 8th grade classrooms will be wired with the FM system, which would prevent my child to have... what the FM system is, it's a system that allows my daughter to overcome a hearing disability. So, that's what I'm talking... I'm sorry if I didn't explain that to every member of the Board. And what I'm trying to find out, in lieu of that system, we were informed that my daughter would have to push a cart around the hallways if that system was not wired into the 8th grade classes. In the 7th grade, she does not have to do that. But our issue is, we want to make sure that the funding is in place for the next coming school year, so she will not have to be pushing around a cart the hallways, and that the classrooms will be wired with that.
Madam?
Yes.
Sir, I can assure you that funding is in place without restriction for that purpose.
That's what I'm trying to find out. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum on the budget. Ms. Arminio?
Yeah, just before we go ahead...
I have a question. Why would anyone think that the township would share some money with us when they charged us $2 million to hook up this high school? They charged us over $1 million to hook up our elementary schools. And at the time that that happened, we did a survey of communities where there were recent school buildings opened, and those communities charged their schools nothing. So, I don't understand why you think the township would supplement anything.
No, I... we would not. Thank you.
Oh, that's okay. Ms. Arminio?
Well, I think I can sort of answer. We think we can hope that the township would consider it, at the very least. We often talked of shared services. And when shared services are a nice fluffy euphemism, it works in some cases. So, I think that we should still start talking about shared services again. In that regard, I think Mr. Zaglarsky has a very interesting idea, and we should pursue good ideas, that after all, we are an educational institution. The other thing is, if we're talking about, and I don't know the statute that Mr. Gorski said, they talked about the Monroe Township Utilities Authority. If that statute represents the authority, that no longer exists. So, that statute might not apply in this case because the authority has been disbanded. And we now have a Monroe Township Utility Department, which is very much a department within the township. So, that might change the equation a little bit. I'm not sure. But if it statute only covers the authority, we don't have one anymore. In fact, there is about $44 million to $46 million in the Monroe Township Utility Authority. And when it was absorbed by the township, they absorbed all that money. And it has since been used, and I believe Mr. Zaglarsky is correct, for miscellaneous things. In some cases, there are other uses, but most of that money has been used to support the municipal budget. Thank you.
Mr. Gorski, did you have to... you wanted to make a comment?
Madam, in that regard, Mr. Pasquale, who is the attorney for the township's utility department, referred to these statutes today. And, you know, I'm going to have to assume that he understands the relevance of these statutes to this particular issue at hand, having that be his client. I can't... I'm not an attorney. I don't want to represent anything more than that. I'm glad you brought up shared services. Because we're always eager to save money, share with other districts, and create efficiencies wherever possible. In this budget, which is available on the Monroe Township District website, if you look under the 1415 Budget tab, we have a plethora of information on the budget, more than is required by law. We have what's called a user-friendly budget. We have revenue information, appropriation information, state aid information, more than you probably care to go into. But some of the shared services that are in this budget are as follows. Under Food Services, we have an inter-local service agreement to share food services with the Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission. We provide lunches for the Academy Learning Center, and we make a profit sharing that. We do a great deal of recycling with Middlesex County Improvement Authority, recycling cardboard, glass, paper, metals. Transportation services. We have transportation agreements with the Middlesex County Regional Ed Service Commission. We also utilize a great amount of jointures. And that's a fancy term for sharing a bus ride with another district's bus who's probably going the same way. And you share the cost based upon how many pupils you have out of the percentage on the total on the bus. Purchasing. We... the Monroe Township Board of Education joined a cooperative purchasing agreement with the Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission for the procurement of goods and services. And the savings on that, since the year and a half inception, is over $750,000, as documented, savings under buying on state contract or bids. We also have an inter-local service agreement with the municipality for communications equipment. We purchase with a federal... we participate with a federal E-rate program. That's where monies are charged as a tax on telecommunication charges. And the district benefits by reaping rebates for purchasing certain technology services. We also have insurance coverage, participation in the New Jersey School Boards Association Insurance Group, ERIC North, which saves a great deal of money by sharing property and casualty insurance rates with our colleagues throughout the county. And there's many more, you know, smaller issues, but those are the ones that we represented in the budget.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, I just wanted to address this. Because from what I understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gorski, is that the issue here is that there are state laws on the books that do not allow municipalities to assess impact fees to developers, right? We could agree or disagree that those rules are good or bad. I think that they're not great. But they're there, from what I understand. So, by doing this and asking for that money, what we're really doing in a circuitous route is assessing developers with impact fees. And those developers could easily then just go to court, say that we're violating the law, and then we're in trouble. So, I think that's where we're going with this. And that's the point that the attorneys are making, and the point, I think, that you're making.
Wayne Hamilton did make that very point, and it's a logical argument. I do understand it.
Are there any other questions by the Board of Education regarding the budget? Seeing none, then we will have a roll call on accepting the 2014, 2015 school budget.
Ms. Arminio?
No.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes. And I would like to thank all the Board members for their collaboration and vision with this year's budget.
And a lot of it goes back to Dr. Hamilton, Dr. Gorman, and Mr. Gorski, and your business office, and all of our staff members who had a say in this budget. And I will have something more about the budget in my Board President's report. At this time, we'll open public forum to anything on the agenda. Again, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. And we will continue to adhere to our three-minute time limit.
I'll just wait for you to finish this. Joe Castelluccio, 20 Ashley Court, Monroe. I wanted to ask if there is a cell phone policy that the Board has, both in public and private session? Are cell phones being used by the Board members in the public session for any text messaging, things like that? And certainly, are they being used or allowed to be brought into the closed session?
We do not have... we are not supposed to be using public... have cell phones out during either public or closed session time?
Are the cell phones brought into closed session?
If they're on somebody's person. But I've never seen anybody have one on a table or...
Can any of the Board members answer that? Have any of the Board members ever brought in a cell phone to the closed session?
We're not supposed to be polling the Board.
Oh, I'll just ask you then.
The policy or the statement is that the Board members are not supposed to be using cell phones during meetings, whether it's a public meeting or a closed session, to be texting either themselves or anyone else.
Okay, perhaps you should just take a look at it, because it can become an interesting matter for someone to have a cell phone in a public session. Certainly, in a private session, public, we're all hearing it. But in a private session, someone could pocket dial somehow. If you know what a pocket dial is, where you don't know it's being dialed, and that number would be open. And certainly, if somebody's texting during that public closed session, I would imagine that's inappropriate.
It would be.
And I just want you to know that, I mean, based on what's been looked at, is that anyone who does use that cell phone for texting or anything, it becomes freedom of information law, and it does become public information at that point. So, if anyone is using it, they should be aware of that.
I believe the Board has been told that, and they should be aware of that.
Okay, and just the last thing about the gentleman's... I don't really recall his name, but he just mentioned about the municipal authority.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, Mr. Chiarella. When you're on the zoning board, or someone's on the zoning board, and if you have a builder come in and someone wants to build in Monroe Township, you can easily say no. They can voluntarily make a contribution to the township for their use. So, you don't have to compel anybody. You don't have to tell anybody they have to. But you can say, "You can't build here." And that would bring another question, whether they would like to voluntarily, perhaps, help the township out. So, there are methods and ways you can discuss it without compelling anybody to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Please come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Mary Ann Lester, 44 Avenue I. I just have two quick questions on the attachments. On page 23 for the legal bills, the $17,655, is that just for this month? For the Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer legal piece? Because I thought I saw something similar to that last month. 23 on the attachments?
Yes, I do recognize that as being a monthly billing.
Okay, so where are we in the total for that Jamesburg litigation, then, including that? Because I know the figure was pretty similar last month.
You know, we spoke to the attorney recently. He gave us a figure of approximately $90,000 that Monroe has expended on the Jamesburg litigation.
And is that just in... what do they call it? The initial gathering of information? Because they said it was going to be a very large amount of gathering of...
Yes, ma'am, we are still in the discovery stage.
Okay, I have one other question. On page 41, you have $10,000 for discovery benefits. And I looked it up. Those are flexible savings accounts. It says it works like an expense account. You can set aside part of your salary before taxes to pay for medical expenses. And you can use it to pay for daycare, medical, and prescription costs that are not covered by insurance. So, if those are flexible accounts, what are we paying discovery for, the $10,000?
I believe that represents a deposit that the Board has to place, kind of like in an escrow account, to fund the employees' participation debit cards. And then, that money is collected through payroll deducts to offset that through the year. So, that's not an expense to the Board.
Okay.
It's merely a deposit. We did conclude last year with a surplus. This is just an initial deposit to fund everybody's escrow card at the beginning of the year.
Okay, so we'll be getting that back, then?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not an expense. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Lou Masters, and I, Michael Kort. Board Action F. Advertise for and solicit bids for maintenance and repair work. That's not a specific bid or any specific group of bids, right? That's just the ability for you to do that?
Your experience on the Board serves you well, Mr. Masters. That's exactly what that is. That is asking the Board for authorization to solicit time and material rates from different trades, so that if an emergent situation arose, we have permission from the Board already to utilize certain contractors within those approved rates.
There's no cost with that, correct?
No.
So far? I didn't see on the... something I didn't see. A positive thing on the agenda was something about the high school came out, about the rating in the state, if you want to. Thought that would be predominantly on here.
That'll actually be a part of the superintendent's report.
And the cell phone policy, that's actually a really good question. If I wanted to Oprah text messages from Board members to staff, how would I go about doing that? Because once it becomes part of your phone, right, I can Oprah it? Even if it's on a personal device?
I believe that you can Oprah the text messages of Board members if they're using their phones during a Board meeting.
Even personal phones, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
And I believe administration, too, not just the Board members, but...
I'd invite everybody to come out to the Oak Tree Garden on May 10th. We could use the help. Otherwise, I have to dig a lot of things. And it's hot.
Mr. Masters, I believe congratulations to you on being appointed by the mayor to the zoning board. It's nice to have a former Board member who will allow me sitting on the Board.
Thank you very much. Just trying to help out.
I'm sure you will.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we will close public forum. And at this time, we will have a Board discussion of space for special services and professional development needs. Do you want to take that mic?
Is there any roll call on the budget?
Thanks for checking anyway. Okay, Mike will... Thank you, doctor. Mr. Teig, would you kindly join me at the microphone? We'll do all the talking tonight. That's Dr. Hamilton, has a fever and is not well. I believe all the Board members have a handout. It's a comparative chart on the different properties that we looked at. I'll ask Mr. Teig to start with this presentation on page 2.
Good evening, Jerry Teig, from the Board Office. The document titled "Office Space Lease Options," two-page document. Look at the second page, which is in red, just to give you some information on some properties that we were asked to look into, either for purchase or lease. You'll see the property address, square footage information, listed costs for either sale or lease, and then just our notes about why the properties didn't work for our needs. If you then go to the first page, you'll see, again, names and addresses of property...
If you then go to the first page, you'll see, again, names and addresses of properties, sizes, approximate cost, and some miscellaneous notes. We've essentially narrowed down lease options for special services and staff development to three sites. And it's broken down to the Monroe Commons, which is located at 239 Prospect Plains Road. You'll see an A, B, and C, which are different suites that are available within that space. The next is 7th Center Drive, which is over by the Forest Gate Country Club and the office complex across from there. You'll see two suites listed there. And then finally, the Cedarbrook Corporate Center, located at Clark Drive, and that is in Cranberry, New Jersey, but right on the outer edge of Monroe. We toured these spaces with Dr. Hamilton, Mr. Gorski, Ms. Rella, and her staff to see if they would work for their setup and gives consideration to some options. I'll highlight a few things for you. When you look at the Monroe Commons offerings, that building, first off, is for sale. The asking price is $2 million. And the board had talked about possibly purchasing a site or a site that would give us a lease with option to buy. The Monroe Commons is the only of the three that gives you that option, lease with option to buy, or just simply lease the property. Moving down to Center Drive, those are simply for lease, as is Cedarbrook also simply for lease. At Monroe Commons, we looked at three individual spaces that are currently available. One of 1,322 square feet, one of 977 square feet, which are on the second floor and they're right next to each other, both would be available to us. When we looked at those, Ms. Rella thought we could make her operation work in that location, with the exception of the central registration, which is also housed currently with Ms. Rella. If you look at item C, which is down on the first floor, the thought was we could use that location for central registration, and then Ms. Rella's operations on the second floor. Something to keep in mind when you think about central registration is, as you know, we've talked about the stopgap measures for the middle school to create space over there. Part of that work that's going to happen there is going to free up two rooms on the outside of the building. It's a former garage in the back of the building, it's currently used as classrooms. With the renovations that we're doing inside the building, we're moving the technology staff out to that location, and it leaves another office open there. The long-term objective is to move central registration to that location. It's an ideal location, obviously centrally located here. It provides direct access into the space without having to enter a school, but also keeps Ms. McCoy, who runs the central registration, at a school site and accessible for us. So the fact that we looked at three different suites in Monroe Commons, the thought was the board has the ability to lease for up to five years. We could lease the two spaces that would house Ms. Rella for a five-year period and consider a shorter term, a little longer than a year, for the central registration, with the potential that that could then move into the stopgap. That then leaves consideration we must give for the staff development. Staff development is not an immediate need in terms of, in June, when the trailer goes, Ms. Rella's on the street, staff development will be finished for the school year and won't resume their operations until the start of next school year. So you have a couple of months there where, if possible, we'd like to be able to avoid some lease payments. Dr. Hamilton also alluded to the fact that we have some spare classrooms at locations, and maybe temporarily, those classrooms could kind of fill the gap for us to save some monies. So that's the Monroe Commons, three offerings. Again, two we would consider immediately for Ms. Rella, and the one for a shorter term for central registration. The property is, to give people bearings of where that is, if you know where the Wawa is on Applegarth Road, crossover Prospect Plains, Monroe Commons is the name of the building, and it's on the right-hand side, a couple hundred yards past the Shabat House that's on the corner of Prospect Plains and Applegarth Road.
Going south or going north from Shabat House?
South. South, for my bearings, yes.
And can I ask, how old is the building?
I can't, I'm sorry, Michelle.
That's okay.
I just can't see you.
How old is the building?
I don't have the date offhand. I would guess it to be probably late 80s, early 90s, in that range.
Does it require, and maybe you can answer this for all of them afterwards?
Sure.
Like, how much renovation would each, and you can go through it, I'll stop, but if you can keep in mind to talk about how much renovation each project, each specific building would use, and that triple net situation.
At Monroe Commons, we don't really anticipate any renovations to the structure, other than finishes, just old dirty carpet. Carpet and paint would be the only thing that we would accommodate there. At 7th Center Drive, again, we don't anticipate renovations, other than carpet and paint. At Cedarbrook Corporate Center, there are two options that we looked at. It's a rather large space there, and best-case scenario, the entire space of 7,200 square feet would accommodate Ms. Rella's operation, Dr. Gorman's operation, and even give some space for growth. We asked them to price that down to an option where we could shorten the space, and that's why you see two there at 7,200, and they had a cutoff point where they could go to 5,000 square feet. You mentioned what they refer to as the CAM charges, which are the common area maintenance charges, the pass-throughs. Those are all included in these prices that you see here. We worked those in, rather than just confusing the issue.
Thank you.
So that's Monroe Commons. Again, what's different about that is if the board wants to consider lease with option to buy, that is the site that has that offering for you. And then also, it allows you, should you want to continue with the plan to move central registration, it allows you to then reduce some of the costs there. At 7th Center Drive, both locations, Suite 910 and Suite 6, would be needed for Ms. Rella's operations. It would be a little tight, keeping central registration there, with the thought that it would be there for a year, we could get by. There would be no space at that site currently for the staff development, however. The placement of these two, you can see numerically, they're not in order, it goes from 6 to 910. There is a suite currently in between these. The leasing agent has talked that the company that occupies the center suite would consider moving down, then we could make our two spaces contiguous. That would be the ultimate desire, but that's not factored into here. Ms. Rella thought she could continue her operation, since they are so close, if they had to remain That, again, also centrally located, but would require staff development to use an interim location. And then finally, the third location, Cedarbrook Corporate Center, beautiful facility, lovely space. It is in Cranberry, though, a little bit further out, closer to 130, so the travel issue comes into play there. It is the most costly, but it does give you the most space. Questions, Mr. Frizios?
How many people are in the trailer right now?
Trailer right now, yes.
Use the microphone.
We are looking somewhere between 13 and 15, including staff, secretary, myself, and a supervisor.
Does the fire department have an occupancy number on those places that you're in?
According to the leasing agents, the leasing agents indicated that we can accommodate the numbers that we talked about. Our bigger concern was actually parking.
Do you know how many?
The occup, the fire limit occupancy for these, no, I do not have the information.
With regard to professional development, is that something that's used, you know, five days a week, you know, six hours a day, or is that something that's intermittently used?
I believe it's intermittent, but I'll defer to Dr. Gorman on that.
It could be, depending on the different content areas, the different needs. So there's sometimes when it's booked every day, and then there are other times when it's not.
Is there any way of utilizing classrooms that aren't in use at the time? In other words, obviously throughout the day, I'm sure every classroom isn't used consistently. There's some downtime with certain classes, especially at the high school, where you might have a classroom empty from 2:00 to 3:00 or something, or from 1:00 to 2:00. Is there any way to come up with a room utilization chart, for example, to say we can do PD in these rooms?
That would be difficult to do. There are some other options, excuse me, there are some other options that we can explore in terms of utilizing classroom space, but the PD space really needs to be consistent so folks know if you're having PD, this is where you go and this is when you go. I would not want to infringe on the school scheduling, frankly, to make that kind of accommodation, but in some of the other areas, like Mill Lake, for instance, we have some space there that we can use for PD until we begin to utilize that class space again.
We've actually brought the PD more back in-house. Is that, that's accurate?
Absolutely.
So that's, and that's actually a benefit to the teachers and to the students, correct?
Absolutely.
Ms. Arminio?
Okay. I thought at one of the ad hoc committee meetings, that the Mill Lake School has five empty classrooms at this time?
Yes.
Or approximately. So can that, can one of those be set up for a temporary, permanent classroom for staff development?
Yes.
So, I mean, you can keep everything, and it could be consistent, like for the next year or so?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Mr. Boy?
I'm not quite sure how to phrase this, because we just got this information, you know, tonight, and we're not making any decision tonight anyway, are we?
I believe we are.
Oh, we are? Okay. Well, one of the things that I feel is that sometimes we don't, we haven't looked far enough down the road when some decisions have been made. And I give you as an example, the fact that we moved the pupil and personnel services out of the Mill Lake School Annex to the trailers, and now, and that was just a couple of years ago, we knew that the trailers were going to probably be going, and so that then created the problem of where we were going to put the pupil and personnel services. And we wouldn't have had that problem had they simply stayed in the Mill Lake School So I think there's a couple of things that we have to look at in terms of down the road. If and when we expand one of our schools or build a new school, to me, that would be an appropriate time to consider providing space for pupil and personnel services, the central registration, even professional development. So that's not really that far away, and that could be part of that plan. The other thing that concerns me, and this are just calculations that I did this evening after getting this information, but if we're paying off, if the Mecca program is repaying its loan at the rate of $5,000 a month, then as of July the 1st, it would strike me that we have about five more years of payments to go. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. Like I said, I just quickly ran through these things.
That's correct, with one exception. If profitability rises, then the board could utilize more of the cash surplus and expedite the payment of the loan.
But the only way that profitability could rise would be to do what?
If some of the more profitable student services are used, in kindergarten enrichment, for example, as opposed to some of the less profitable Mecca rates, or if the board should choose to raise the rates down the line. Either one of those could make the program more profitable, as could curtailing some of the expenses that you see on the financial statements.
Okay. Well, as I said, it struck me that it would take about five years at the present repayment rate. Now, I looked at the Monroe Commons, and according to some calculations that I've done here, it would strike me in that same amount of time that we're getting that loan repaid, we would be paying for leasing services approximately $261,000, and a loan of about $284,000 is what's going to get repaid over that period of time. So that's a difference of about $23,000. And all I'm saying is, I think we need to look at this carefully. We need to look at this, at these figures. We need to see how this plays out monetarily, not just for next year, but for a longer period of time, to see what the best course of action is. I understand, from the last meeting we had, that pupil and personnel services needs a place to go as of June. I completely understand that. I also understand that there are people on the board that want to maintain the Mecca program, yet we have no legal obligation to do that. These are pre-kindergarten students. We are not required to provide them with any services. And I know that the intention of the program was to encourage staff members who go out on maternity leave to return earlier, and yet I seriously doubt that it has been very successful in accomplishing that aim. And so what we did is, we then went into the early childhood, childcare program to try to get this thing to float, and it is floating. There's no question about that. But how much revenue it's actually bringing in, I would say, over a long period of time, I'd say that's questionable. And I know some people have expressed the thought of expanding the program to more students. Well, you cannot expand the program to more students without a different facility. So I just say, my sense is, we cannot rush into this decision without knowing where it's taking us, so that a year or two down the road, we don't find, we don't see ourselves faced with what we saw with the implementation of the iPads the first year out. One year later, we found out that they were no longer adequate. And then we had the implementation of the Mecca program, which we found out was not succeeding very well. It is now, but I still question, how much revenue are we really going to be getting from this? And I guess to sum it up is, it seems reasonable to me that we consider, we consider ending this Mecca program, and it's a good program, there's no question in my mind. It's probably serving those children quite well, and I think the parents who use it are probably just, you know, so glad to have it, because I think it's probably, from everything I've heard, a good quality program. But we're going out to rent space when we actually have a space available, if we did not have the Mecca program. And I really wonder, if the Mecca program had to be somewhere else, if we were having to rent space for the Mecca program somewhere else, is there any way in the world that that Mecca program would be profitable? I don't think so. So we're going out to rent space for pupil and personnel services in order to maintain the Mecca program, which is using facilities that pupil and personnel services could use. That's simply my view on this whole thing.
And that's really kind of two different questions. The first would be, do you want to keep the Mecca program or not? And the second, which is what we're here supposed to be talking about, is where are we going to put special services as of June?
But I don't think you can answer those questions separately. I think that gets us into trouble when we don't take a larger view of the situation that we're facing. As long as you compartmentalize everything and make the decision just based on that one thing, well, yeah, it may be good for that one thing, but it may not be good overall. And I'm simply saying, I think we need to exercise some caution because of that.
Anyone else from the board? Mr. Noxton?
Mr. Boy brings up some excellent points, and it kind of goes along with some of the questions that I asked at the last meeting, where we basically said that if we were not doing a Mecca program, we would not be incurring this cost for pupil services and professional development. And I imagine that's still an accurate assessment. I understand that from an accounting standpoint, that these numbers are being taken from the pupil services and the professional development line items for their budget, but at the end of the day, if we said, let's put pupil services and let's put professional development back in where the Mecca and the KRAP are currently located, and went out and actually looked for space for the BASK, I'm not for BASK, for KRAP and Mecca in these facilities, then the line items for their budget, these costs would be coming off the Mecca program, and it would actually show more of a true profit and loss statement than we're currently seeing. Is that accurate, Mr. Gorski?
Yes, that's an accurate statement. If, at the time that the original budget for Mecca was constructed, a lease expense had to be considered in that initial budget, perhaps the rates then, at that time, would have been adjusted accordingly. But under the scenario that you just raised, whereas if pupil personnel services was to move back into the Annex, and if the Mecca program was to have to lease similar space to house the current program, then yes, there would be a considerable expense as opposed to the Annex depreciation, which is much less to the Mecca program.
So therefore, basically, it would show realistically the true profit nature or lack of profit that we're currently seeing in that program. that we're currently seeing in that program. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Armidio?
I also think that it is a big picture item that we need to discuss. So, I do, I think they're not mutually exclusive. And again, I'm just throwing this out because it just occurred to me. Can we put Mecca in the classrooms in Mill Lake?
No.
Why not? I mean, it's not a challenge, it's a question.
Because the Mill Lake facility does not have the appropriate, does not meet the appropriate guidelines in terms of housing students of that age.
I see. So, okay, we can't use a current facility. We would have to go out and look for another facility. So, if I sort of understand the nature of this discussion, that Mecca really, it can't be a standalone project or program. It requires its own, you know, it essentially requires a little help, i.e. the loan, and, you know, it couldn't, it couldn't function as it does if it had to pay rent, it sounds like to me, because it's not paying rent now, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Presiosso?
How many square feet is the Annex?
I believe it's about 6,000 square feet.
6,000?
Do you want to make a recommendation?
Madam Board President, it was our directive after the last board meeting, whereas resolution was passed removing the trailers. Mr. Tagg has made arrangements with the trailer company to come pick them up in the month of June. And Dr. Hamilton, Mrs. Ruela, Jerry Tagg and I have visited several different properties. And the Mecca conversation excluded, we have considered the following elements: ADA complacency, lease with an option to purchase, which is a very attractive way of financing the property, because you could build equity. And I believe that, I believe that all of these properties on the first page have gain in price appreciation potential. Also, considering the rental cost, the location, that it is the unanimous decision of all the stakeholders involved in the use of this facility to recommend the Monroe Commons. That's the one facility that's closely located in town, has a monthly rent expenditure of approximately 7,000, but I can assure the board that when it comes time to do the lease, and we talk about this in closed session, because we can't do it in open, we would put ourselves in a compromising situation, that we will be as aggressive as possible. Gives us 4,000 square feet, which seems to be the right size, and it's a very attractive, clean, move-in-ready facility. So, it would be our recommendation, on behalf of Dr. Hamilton, Marietta Ruela, Jerry Tagg and myself, exclusive of the Mecca topic, to recommend the Monroe Commons tonight. And I believe you have a resolution authorizing me to go ahead and enter into negotiations for that property and present the lease obligations to the board at the next meeting.
Okay, I'll read the resolution, and then if the board would like to make a first and second, then we'll discuss this resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize and approve the business administrator, board secretary, to negotiate a lease, subject to the final approval of the lease by the Board of Education, for a term not to exceed five years, for the property known as Monroe Commons, located at 239 Prospect Plains Road, Monroe Township, New Jersey. The lease shall provide for a term commencing on June 1st, 2014, or thereafter, for the purpose, among other uses, of providing space for pupil personnel services of approximately 3,750 square feet. Mr. Kaufman? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zarneski. I'll open it up to the board for comments and questions just on this resolution. Mr. Presiosso?
Again, we'd be in pressure into doing something that's not good for this board, it's not good for the taxpayers, it's not good for what's happening here. We're in a rush. We have this piece of paper here, we have, we have an hour and a half to decide what we want to do.
Well, I believe that the board unanimously, I think it was unanimously, voted to get rid of the trailers at the last board meeting, knowing that we needed...
That was another time we had very little time to decide what to do. This was something that, when we implemented Mecca, it should have been discussed, it should have been done, we should have had a plan. We don't have a plan, we never have a plan. Now, we're going to pay for this plan.
Anyone else?
Just one other consideration on this lease with an option to buy. You know, as Mr. Poy stated, we are up against the wall to provide special services with a permanent solution to house their facilities. We need to get them in a place by June 1st. This is a lease that could be entered into for a short period of time, one year, two years, three years, up to five years. This isn't, you know, a marriage if you don't like this particular situation, and something in the future should happen with Mecca, this is a lease that, you know, you determine the duration. You save money on the lease price when you go out to five years.
Is it, we will be getting real to the trailers, and how much are we spending on trailer leasing at this time?
Currently, we're spending about $19,000 and change on the lease for the trailers that house special services at Applegate School. One of the options that was just recommended was the Monroe Commons at a monthly obligation of less than $7,000.
So, we would be saving budget money of approximately $12,000 a month?
Yes, ma'am.
By getting rid of the trailers, which we agreed to, and putting 7,000 in the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
And right now, before we got rid of the lease last month, we have 12,000, 19,000 a month in that budget?
That's correct.
Anyone else? Mr. Nochtstein?
Unfortunately, I really feel like there's a knife to my throat here. There really isn't many good options here, and I really want to really stress that this is what happens when you don't do a business plan. This should have been addressed in a normal business meeting, when you're, you know, starting a new business, which is basically what we did with Mecca. These down-the-road costs would have been presented in that business plan. A while back, when I was a member of the public, I requested that we do a business plan. I've never seen this business plan. We all, the current, the former board said that they were going to do a business plan, and obviously, whether they did or not, I don't know. We've never seen it, the public's never seen it. But these are the kind of the things that are addressed in a business plan. My concern here is that we're constantly hearing that Mecca is a profit center now. It's an enterprise fund. Well, I don't see it as a profit center. As far as I'm concerned, and I think that we can do line items and take things off other people's budgets and all we want, but at the end of the day, if this, if we moved Mecca into the facilities that we need, Mecca would not be profitable. So, I think that we really need to look at the shortest term possible for the lease, because down the road, we may say, we can't afford to be losing money every month for a program, and we're currently maxed out on the Mecca as far as the enrollment, based on the size constraints. Is that accurate?
No, we could add more children to Mecca. I don't think it's advisable, but we could add more children.
But it's not advisable, basically?
It's not advisable.
Okay. So, for all intents and purposes, we're maxed out on that. We really don't see much larger increases coming into that program without major increases in funding.
I need to qualify that, with the exception of the infant room.
Okay. So, I mean, I would like to hear from the board members that actually put forth this Mecca program. What are their thoughts, and what are their feelings as the best way to proceed?
Mr. Kaufman?
I think Tom brings up a really good point, and I think one of the things we should consider here is the fact that there's a couple of things going on that's kind of paving the way for the future of the district, right? We've got the Ad Hoc Committee on Facilities and Expansion, that's going to be reconvening and looking at the big picture and the total, you know, end product of things that we have to do in the future, as well as some of these issues that are up in front of us right now. If I'm not mistaken, just to talk about how we got to here with the decision we have to make tonight, I thought we had a, I'm sorry, I wasn't there, but there was a Buildings and Grounds meeting that decided to do away with the trailers, and then we had a board meeting after that that said, okay, we're going to go ahead and do away with the trailers, and now we have to find space. I would agree with Tom. I think the reality is here, we have an immediate need, right? I'm also, you know, interested in hearing more about reusing and allocating the space we already have. I love this library, I do, but somebody has to tell me why we need all this square footage when students here have iPads. They literally have libraries in their hands. So, we have to maximize, I mean, for professional development, you can carve out a corner in here, call it the PD Center, and have all the staff members meet here. I mean, this is, this is a huge room. You could almost carve it out for a couple of other things. I don't know how much this is being used during the day. I'm not going to use my references from my kids were here, but I know we have it, but, you know, how much are we effectively using the space? I would be in favor of using the rental space at Monroe Commons, but I don't think I would want to go beyond three years, because we do have some of these other things, these other initiatives that are coming up, and we may be, you know, maybe spending a few more shekels than we have to, but I think two or three years, three years tops, would be a better way to look at this, because once you're locked in for five years, then you got to break a lease, and you got to pay all that other stuff, so that's just one on it.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question. Are these prices based on what term of the lease?
Five-year lease.
This is based on, so, we could expect these costs to be higher, basically, if we go with the two or three years, what you're saying?
That's correct.
So, we really can't really vote on how to go, because we don't really know the costs?
I respectfully disagree. You can, you can pass this resolution tonight by modifying it to a term that this board is satisfied with, if it's not five years, and this authorizes me to go into negotiations on the lease. I don't think the price is going to change that significantly from three to five. You do get a discount the longer you go out, because the turnover is expensive to the landlord, et cetera. And we're not, we're not quoting or any prices for the lease in this resolution. This resolution is simply authorizing the selection of the Monroe Commons for a term, and authorizing me to negotiate a lease that will be brought forth to the board for future consideration.
So, you could bring us back a, numbers for a one-year lease, a three-year lease, a five-year lease?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, we would decide, we could decide at that time?
Yes, ma'am. I just caution you, because of special services having moved so many times recently, that a short-term lease, I'm sure, has Miss Marietta Ruela's stomach turning.
How much would the move cost?
It's done in-house, it involves overtime, it involves perhaps rental vehicles, I'm not really sure. We'd have to go back and research that, but there is a cost to each move, that's for sure.
What did move cost us the last time, from the Annex to the trailers?
I'd have to research that.
That was over $100,000, was it?
No, I don't think it was that much.
If I could comment on that, there was a district-wide move at that time. We redistrict all of the schools, if you recall. So, we moved high school to here, middle school became a six, seven, eight middle school, we pulled out of all the schools, so it was in that entire package of a district-wide move.
Yeah, but if they didn't have to move, it wouldn't have been a cost.
That is correct.
Mr. Poy?
Well, I remember the last time we discussed this at the last board meeting, there was a talk about all the disruption to the pupil and personnel services program because of these moves. And when we're talking about a lease of one or two years, then we're simply going to be perpetuating that problem. And I've heard mentioned tonight that we're looking for a permanent solution. Well, it doesn't seem that a one- or two- or three-year lease is a permanent solution to the problem. So, I will make a separate motion after we deal with this one.
Mr. Kaufman?
Jerry, we had central registration and central office for a time, and that there's space on the, as soon as you walk in, on the left side, there's desks and stuff like that off, in that, on that left-hand side. What would we, what would have to change if we wanted to try and move central registration back there and find space for the folks that are there now? I mean, the only reason why I'm asking is because for central registration, you know, it's for people that are coming to the district and they want to sign up. It kind of makes sense that it's in the board office, that you don't have to send them somewhere else.
Keep in mind the plan for next summer, to have the space for central registration behind the middle school. It is an ideal location for them in terms of access, the availability of the space. One of the reasons it was moved out of central office, because it proved so disruptive to the central office operations. Parents show up with young children, young children were getting loose in the building. It became a very disruptive situation.
Anyone else? Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. One is, and I'm just echoing the concerns that I'm hearing also, just on the cost, not knowing what the exact cost is, and I know we're voting to go forward with something without really knowing the cost, which is a concern for me. But the second thing is, and I've talked about this in Buildings and Grounds also, is just the security aspect of this, because we have, we're going to have children and administrators, you know, teachers off-site, without having the ability to monitor, supervise, and offer security like we do in the central office or at any of the schools. In today's day and age, with all the craziness that we're hearing, that's, that is one thing that just sticks in my head, is that I hate to see something happen in that location where we weren't, you know, we weren't aware that it's going on, or we find out later that something awful happened. So, I just want to, you know, make sure we're thinking about that also.
Mr. Presiosso?
Why are the children going to be there?
If there are children there, it's through central registration. We do have lots of parents for parent training and staff for parent training, beyond what professional development does. So, we usually don't have lots of children in there, but as I mentioned at our last meeting, if someone within the district, let's say an added district student, for whatever reason, or an in-district student, someone's not at home, many times, they're brought to us at central registration there. We maintain them until their parents can come.
That has to be done?
Well, that's where we usually have, because if someone's not in the school or an added district student, at that point in time, we house all that information. As we were saying, we're beginning that process for our extended school year. So, right now, we are starting up for a program for, you know, we talked about extended school year within a school. All our added district students will be going to school during this time. So, we're preparing for a program, transportation, obviously, records that we will have. Central registration is very busy during this time, because we have many families who are moving in. We maintain diagnosis issues, we also do truancy issues, we have many reasons that maybe, there may be children that come into the building, but not specific to each day that we have them.
Anyone else?
No, no.
I'm sorry, I really can't see. I see the top of her head, so she's going to have to raise her hand high.
The professional services requires how many square feet again? Develop, professional development, excuse me. I'm sorry. My mistake.
Two classrooms and then office space for three individuals, and possibly a refrigerator or water cooler.
And that's, so, so that could be accommodated in Mill Lake School, possibly? The potential for that can be an accommodation? Okay. So, does that, how much would that reduce Ms. Ruela's needs if that happened?
Madam? The first scenario for the Monroe Commons with 4,000 square feet really did not afford much space, if any, to professional development. That was simply for PPS and some storage space.
Okay. And then, next year, in the back of the facility that you were talking about, will house, what would that be good for, again?
Central registration.
So, then we'll move, so, okay, so I'm now really confused, because if we move, so, central registration, if it goes with Ms. Ruela now, will be moved again next year?
Correct.
So, how much does central?
That's one person, for full disclosure.
Oh, which is one person?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, only one person handles the central, so you don't really need a whole lot of space for central, permanent space for central registration?
Correct.
It's just an accommodation now, because we don't have it anywhere else?
That is correct.
In Ms. Ruela's arena?
And any families who are coming in?
And any families who are coming in or throughout that day? And their appointment set up throughout the day?
No, I understand your need, your current, but we're talking about temporary and permanent need.
Right.
And next year, that's going to be moved again?
Correct.
Because that was already planned for. That was part of what this plan was.
Okay. So what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to find the mac, the minimum amount of space we need for a permanent solution for your situation.
Madam?
Is someone can divorce?
I believe we recommended that with the Monroe Commons. At, at, at 4,000 square feet, that's a comfortable space for pupil personnel services, for the volumes of student records that are required by law to be maintained and to afford, you know, some moderate amount of room for current central registration and potentially growth.
But that means all three?
Yes.
All three for the first year, when central registration moves. Item C could be eliminated if the board's-
C could be eliminated?
Correct. And the reason we say C is because C is on the first floor. A and B are on the second floor. And they can be combined as one larger office.
Can I ask another question?
Mr. Chiarella?
So if I'm understanding this right, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're voting then on all A, B, and, one A, B, and C as a unit?
Correct.
Not just one of these options?
Correct.
The square footage was noted in the resolution, 3,750 square feet. That's one A, B, and C. That's administration's recommendation for spatial needs right now.
And we're looking at today, we're not looking at tomorrow. So this resolution is to, not for the board to look for a permanent place next year, but to lease space starting in June. So if there's no further discussion or questions, then we'll have a roll call.
The resolution was as follows. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize and approve Business Administrator Board Secretary to negotiate a lease, subject to the final approval of the lease by the Board of Education, for a term not to exceed, not to exceed five years, with an option to purchase the property of which the lease premises are a part at the end of the term of the lease. For the property known as Monroe Commons, located at 239 Prospect Plains Road, Monroe Township, New Jersey, the lease shall provide for a term commencing on June 1st, 2014 or thereafter, for the purpose, among other uses, providing space for pupil personnel services of approximately 3,750 square feet.
A roll call?
Ms. Arminio?
No.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
No.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
No.
Mr. Prezioso?
No.
Mr. Poy?
No.
Mrs. Koloponov?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion does not pass. We have no further recommendation to house pupil personnel services for June 1st.
Mr. Poy?
Yes. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we terminate the MECA ECEP program as of the end of this year and use that space for pupil personnel services so that they will have a permanent solution to their problem.
So moved. I second.
Well, Mr. Poy made that motion. Would you like to second it?
Sure.
Seconded by Mr. Nostine. Okay. Conversation, comments, questions? Or we just get to the vote?
Well, I know it was my motion, but I do have a question.
Okay.
The, the MECA program has the use of that building at least through June, correct? We have that obligation?
Yes. We've received deposits from students. And there's an obligation to parents, in my opinion, to conclude those services through the end of the school year.
Okay. And is that program operating in the summer?
No.
Okay. Then, I don't think we should be throwing those children out on the street and putting their parents in dire straits with such short notice. So my question would be, if that, if this motion that I have made were to pass, how would we accommodate the need for pupil personnel services?
Ms. Ruela, when would be the end date that the program would conclude?
The last day of school, which is, I believe, the 25th?
25th is graduation.
25th. And the trailers will be breaking apart on the 25th. So we need to be out prior to that time. At this point in time, at least 55 filing cabinets will travel with us as the active files. We have over 1,000 students, probably 1,200 special education students. And those files are the active files. The inactive files, which we also have stored with us right now, possibly could be stored somewhere else. So that, that beyond the 15 people, beyond all of the departments that are housed with us, we do have lots and lots of files that we have with us. And I would like to say, you know, with the MECA program, I don't know how many of the board were there to observe, to see the students, to see how well we have done for those students. The kindergarten students are our children from Monroe. The MECA children may be of staff members, but they're our children also. And I would ask that you, before you make that decision to close a program that you may not have visit, you may not see how it's grown, what potential it has to grow, that you go to observe. Because you are all talking about a program that, to you, is a business plan, to us as educators, is so much more, is so much more. So beyond the fact that I will be out somewhere, I think it's very unfair for my staff to not only have to be placed somewhere, but now, at this point in time, to move for a month, to move again. I think it really is the time to make a decision, to look at the present. You have been talking a lot about the past tonight with MECA. But I know Dr. Hamilton and I and Mr. Gorsky, Kathy, we've seen a lot of growth within that program. So I would say, please go and observe before you make that decision. And then as we go forward to move my department, understand that it is not only special services, it entails quite a bit. And those staff members have moved four times in six years. So they deserve that too. And all of our children that we house. So I would ask that you just take that time.
I just wanna say in regard to MECA, we spent many years, I know going back to probably 2007, to discuss a plan for our staff, whom, we were getting tons and tons of new staff. And they got married, they got pregnant, and now we have a place to keep them. We did have a plan. We knew from the very beginning that the first year was gonna be difficult, that we were not gonna be making a profit. I have been there to visit. I think Sharon has done a phenomenal job. I don't think you could find a better person to take care of that job. What we're doing for our students and our staff, to not do that anymore, would be, in my view, very sad and a very tough disservice to all of our, 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 our parents who have wanted full-day kindergarten, which we can't do. It's their way of getting full-day kindergarten and paying for it. And I would think that's, that's sad.
Mr. Nostine?
I just want you to know that I think MECA is a fantastic program. And I think the rapper, the K-Rap's a fantastic program. When I seconded this motion, it is not calling into question that capability whatsoever. It would be much easier if the program was not a success with the children, quite frankly. But it is a major success. And I think that anybody here knows, I've been an advocate of it. I want this to succeed. However, what will we do to make it succeed? Do we wanna keep costing the taxpayers who basically voted down full-day kindergarten because they didn't wanna fund it? Now we're hearing that it's really a full-day kindergarten that the parents are paying for. But unfortunately, because it is so costly, it's not just those parents paying for it. It's the township paying for it. And the township gave us a clear mandate that they don't wanna pay for it. If we can come up with a solution tonight where MECA will be profitable, I will be the first one to say, let's do it. Because I think it is a good plan. But until we can make a profit, and we are definitely not profitable, it is gonna be costing us this amount of money every month to fund MECA. And my understanding is that we voted down full-day kindergarten. So to do this is like bypassing the people that voted and said they don't want it. So unfortunately, don't misconstrue this as a statement on the program. I am, I'd be very sad tonight if we had, if this had to go away. But we're looking for solutions. And that is a solution. So I hope that we can come up with another solution. But we are under the gun here, as you know. And to make a decision tonight based on spending another $240,000 a year, basically, on MECA, that's a very tough decision to make. And I think we're looking for solutions. And the ones, motion that's on the floor tonight is a solution. So please, give us ideas.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes. I too would like to say, I think we'd be remiss not to consider this motion seriously. But it is with, it's very discouraging that we have to make these kinds of decisions. And you mentioned, we've been, we've been thinking about the past and we should be worried about the present. But the problem is, the past has been influencing the present. And we're, again, and I mentioned it last time, we're doing, we're making decisions in crises. It strikes me that, and I feel bad that we keep moving departments around, but it strikes me that you've, you have been moved four times in six years, I believe, previous to this year. And yet, you understood that when you supported MECA, it was a good thing. So I recognize your sacrifice and I appreciate it. And again, for the children and the parents and the teachers, who are, I'm sure, doing exemplary job. But the problem is, we keep saying, okay, well, we've made that decision, let's move on to making this decision now. And then in the fut, we keep constraining the future by the decisions we're making in the present because we don't wanna learn from the past. So it is with, and it sounds trite, but I don't mean it to be, with a very heavy heart that, that we need to make some decisions. So maybe going forward, we might learn from this and really put things together with, with the full knowledge of the unintended consequences and the unintended costs. We have 100 and, I think, $13 million budget. And next year, we won't have the same kind of funds to curtail the taxes. So I think we have to start making the very, very hard decisions. I've been in this district 32 years. I have mostly supported the school budgets because I believe in education. But we are going into a phase in our community and our country that we have to start being cognizant and start making difficult decisions. So I thank you for everything you've done and all the teachers. But I think we, we need to start having these kinds of discussions.
And if I can add one more thing. In talking about the annex, I mean, there's no guarantee that we would then stay there. Because part of our move is always that the district is a growing district, and it always will be. And, and we try to work with that. And we try to work through a plan as best as we can. But at many times through central registration, I can see how quickly we have so many families that are moving in. And we have to accommodate that too. So there's never a guarantee, and I realize that as the Director of People Personnel Services, that if I was to go back to the annex, does not mean in two years that would not be needed for something else. You know, when, when we look at any area, when we're looking at leasing, we can take a look ahead and say, yes, you know, you can be there for two or three years or if we want to continue that lease. Because it's not a need for another program or for our children. And that's why I ask that you just, you know, be careful and be mindful about MECA.
If I may, Madam Board President, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Yes.
Firstly, to discontinue MECA is essentially putting the balance of the loan, calling that a wash. And I think if, if the view is about a fine, being fiscally responsible, I think there is some obligation to consider the balance of the loan. So that's, that's one piece. Secondly, a couple of things that were said tonight, I think we need to correct. MECA was not just thought of overnight. It was not a rash decision, and the decision was not made because we were in a crisis. It was created as a service to our staff to continue to make Monroe a desirable place to work. And it continues to attract people. And that's one of the benefits of, that we can offer new employees who come into the district. So it is not a program that's just created for the sake of being created. Additionally, I do need to go on record by saying the iPads were not replaced because they were inadequate. The iPads, and that's been, been said a couple of times. Excuse me. And I don't wanna rehash that. But I think sometimes we say things publicly and administration, we don't counter them. We allow this to, to the board members to, to just use this as an opportunity to articulate and express their thoughts and views. And sometimes that misinformation gains root, takes root, and it becomes a truth when it is not necessarily a truth. And there's background information that may not, you may not always be fully engaged in or privy to in order to inform those choices and decisions. But as you vote on this, this item, that's one, and quite frankly, I'm kinda glad that it's out there because it has been the source of contention for the last several months. So if the board is not gonna support MECA, it is quite fine. If the board decides that they want to, you wanna dismantle MECA, take this roll call and let the action speak for itself. But understand that it is not just about MECA for the sake of it being a program. It is a service to our staff members. And finally, you have to also keep in mind that as we anticipate the future, future growth of our district and continuing to attract staff, because we are not at the top of the guide in terms of what we offer staff members, MECA becomes an attractive caveat for young teachers who are looking to come into the district because there is a cost-saving to them in terms of childcare.
And just to piggyback on, on Dr. Hamilton's, what he just said, that we were asked by the public many years ago to come up with alternative sources of income because we, we're not getting our fair share of funding from the state. We needed to look at other ways of making money. And MECA was one of those things that we knew could, could be profitable, that would be profitable, and would be a service to our, our district. And felt, and the boards at that time, which was more than one board, agreed that this was a good place to go.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, one last thing on, on the genesis of MECA and the other programs. As was mentioned earlier, we did do a lot of research and figuring out, you know, is this something that we would wanna take on? Is this something that we wanna try and do? And Mike had a, went to great lengths in researching what other districts have done. And I think, don't quote me, it might have been East Brunswick that I believe you brought up when they started their program. They did not clear costs for three years, which meant they were in, operating, no matter how you slice it, they were operating in the red. We did that, turned it around within less than a year, about 10 months or so, turning it into clearing the costs, returning back money to be paid back the loan or the, you know, the money that was lent to the program to start it in the beginning. If we decide here that we wanna terminate that, again, we're saying that, that, all that effort, all that work and the money that was going back to replenish the loan is gonna be lost, as you mentioned earlier. So, and the sad thing is, as you mentioned before, Marietta, nothing in this district, when you say permanent and space, can never be used in the same sentence, ever. When we built this high school, we knew we had X number of square footage that we had to go for. And we were approved for the educational specs of the high school. And we knew, at some future state, when we talked about ad hoc and what we have to do in the future, we might need to add on to this building. So, you know, really, we really can't say that this would be the end place for pupil personnel services or the annex is gonna be home for such and such. You know, you may be uprooted because the Mill Lake area expands. And we now, we have to look at that for classroom space as well. So it would be sad to, to, to take a shot at MECA just to be able to resolve something which we may be able to do in a shorter term. The only reason why I would wanna try and think about another alternative here is, while the motion that was said before talked about the five-year period, I would like to talk about, you know, after we vote on this, to bring that back with a shorter period. So we know, okay, this is what you have to work with. We have ad hoc to deal with this and many other problems with regard to space within the district. If we can free up more space, both within a school or within a facility, that would allow us to absorb the services that we already have. If we have three empty classrooms at Mill Lake, if we redistrict, we might have more breakage. We don't know what that's gonna wind up being. But, you know, the jury's still out on some of these other big decisions in the district that really do affect everybody. So that's my point.
And that was one of the reasons we had- And that was one of the reasons we had an ad hoc committee, because there were so many questions about space and facilities. We needed the support of the community. So we asked them, they're still working on that decision. We, at the last meeting, they asked for a redistricting plan. Mr. Dr. Hamilton, I don't think we got that yet.
No, we have not.
So we're waiting for that to come in. And hopefully, when they see the redistricting plan, they'll come back to the board with a recommendation on facility needs. Mr. Poy?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Gorski, and I realize he may not be prepared to answer it, but I think it would be helpful. Let us assume that we went with the five-year lease, okay, with the, at the Monroe Commons. In terms of doing that, how does that balance with the financial bottom line with MECA in that five-year period of time? Well, you say if MECA were making enough money, enough profit to pay for this lease, I would have no issue, okay? I would have no issue whatsoever. I'd say, good, let's keep MECA, and we'll use those funds to lease a space for, you know, that we need. That would make perfect sense to me. But, so to me, I would need to sort of see, well, what's the bottom line on a five-year lease and continuing to run MECA for those five years? I'd like to see how that looks. To me, that would be informative in terms of how I would even vote on my own motion.
Gorski?
Mr. Poy, as we outlined earlier, the Monroe Commons with all three options, A, B, and C, for 4,000 square foot, is under 7,000 a month. It's not to exceed seven. So to use a round number for purposes of this exercise, $7,000 a month, that's $84,000 annually.
But that's only for that first year, is it not?
The lease amount...
Because we're dropping one of those at the end of the first year.
And then, that's correct. If central registration was to leave, and as Mr. Poy, as Mr. Teague recommended, then option C would go away. Then you're looking at...
Forty-seven, 436.
About $4,000 a month, okay?
Okay.
I could say this definitively. If you looked at the June 31 financial statement for MECA, there was a profit of about $39,000. You prorate that for a full year, that's a profit of approximately $80,000. To me, that's equivalent to the lease payment on the Monroe Commons on an annual basis for all three properties. If C falls off, then the lease amount for the Commons would be less than the current level of profit being recognized by MECA.
But we mustn't forget that that $80,000 from MECA is really being used to repay the loan. Is it not?
I disagree with that statement.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get clarification of.
No, annually, you bring in about $80,000 cash profit from MECA. That's about equivalent to the full A, B, and C lease cost for the Commons. And if C falls off, that would mean then that the lease payment per annum for Commons is less than the profit for MECA.
But I understand that, but where's the business, where is MECA repaying the loan to the board?
MECA repays the board $5,000 a month, which was the resolution passed previously.
And this $80,000 does not include that $5,000 a month? Which comes out to be about 60,000?
There are two separate and independent statements. The profit from MECA recycles to cash. Currently, there's a balance of about $53,000 in MECA for cash. That cash then goes to pay the general fund loan, $5,000 a month. So my point is, again, that the MECA profit is $80,000 a month, and the lease payment is about the same for all three spaces.
Per year?
Per year. The annual profit for MECA at the current level is the same as renting A, B, and C for the Commons. There's no material difference. And if one of those spaces falls off, again, the Commons' rent would be less than the profit annually for MECA.
And I think too, that the last finance meeting, or maybe the one before that, the committee had agreed not to raise the rates for MECA. And so therefore, it never came to the full board because the committee did not have a recommendation to the board. We at any time could decide to raise those rates if we needed to.
Madam Board President, one other consideration relative to this. If MECA was closed, and the board so wished to close MECA as of the end of the year. Currently, the loan is about 305,000. So, you know, your round numbers here, about 300. You got about 50-something in cash. Then you would have recognized a $250,000 loss on MECA. Assuming you don't have any other utility for the equipment and everything else that's in the building.
Okay, but that would be offset by the fact that we're not having to lease space for Mrs. Rela's program. We'd be saving money.
I don't see that as an offset. One is a definite business loss. That money is gone, $250,000 written off. The other is a lease where it's equivalent to the continuing profit.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, and maybe this might help you. One of the things that we talked about in finance when it came to whether or not we should raise the rates for tuition this year, we decided to put it off for a year. And the reason why we decided to put it off for a year was because we do have something that's going to be coming up at the end of next year. And that's going to be, hopefully, we'll be in a position to assume the before and after-school program as well as the MECA and the ECE, or A, I can't remember.
ECE.
ECE program. So when you talk about dollars and cents, right? Forgetting about the fact that MECA is returning $5,000 a month to repay the loan at that period in time as well, you, we should be realizing, I'll just say conservatively, several hundred thousand, because we talked about ridiculous numbers, right? We're all nodding as several hundred thousand dollars of profit to also offset not just the loan, but for these other over and above costs for these other things.
And you could pay off the MECA loan in one year, in less than a year, with all the stuff that you would pay next year, and then you start the before and after-school program? You'd pay that off right away? Mr. Preziosso?
I'm confused though. If we're making all this money and the program is growing, we're going to need more space. And then we would spend more money.
Again, we spoke about space. Space we control. It's not a mandated program. The before and after-school program and MECA, we control the space. It's not something that we have to worry about growth.
We have it right now. They're using our facilities right now. The difference would be, we would be the ownership instead of the people who are owning it now. They use our cafeterias and our gymnasiums. We have, that would be our space for us. It's the same space. We would need no more space, we would need no less space.
But is it not true that this money from taking over the BAS program, that money, if it weren't used to take care of the lease, that that money could be used to offset increases in the budget?
You have to talk about the funds.
But do we...
The answer is yes. The proprietary profit from the potential of taking over the BAS program could be transferred to the general fund budget.
And this is what I was getting at earlier when I said, we need to look at the whole picture before we make a decision. You can't look at it piecemeal and say, yes, this, no, that, yes, this one, no, that other one. The whole thing has to be looked at. So you really see where is it taking you in terms of operating the district and in terms of what is best for the program and the district.
And as a board, we act on the recommendation of the administration. And we don't do the research, the administration does the research. So we ask them to do what the board asks them to do, and then they come back, they give us their recommendation, and we approve it or we don't approve it. So we don't go out and research or say, we'd like to be here or there. That's what we would ask the administration to do. Is there any other comments and questions on MECA? So we'll have a roll call on what's the resolution?
Mr. Poy's resolution to terminate MECA at the conclusion of MECA's school year and to use the space for PPS.
Mr. Preziosso?
Is it written in stone that we have to take the trailers away?
We passed resolution at the last meeting.
I understand that.
Then that's stone.
As I mentioned at the last meeting, that would probably be among the worst business decisions to continue leasing the trailer.
If we needed to house them for another couple of months, we couldn't hold off that destruction of the trailers for another couple of months.
Mr. Teague?
Until September?
The board has a contract that expires. So, and the leasing company, Mobile Lease Modular, has already committed them to another school district. They've actually requested if they could come in earlier and take them. They're recycling them this summer.
And it being negotiated again. I mean, everything's negotiable.
We did negotiate, we presented that to the board, and the board said no to those options.
But now we're in a different scenario.
Yeah, but I think they have a commitment to the other district.
Roll call.
Again, this is for the termination of MECA and to use the space for PPS at the conclusion of this school year. Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Chiarrella?
No.
Mr. Zarneski?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Nostine?
No.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich?
No.
Madam Board President, motion to terminate MECA uses space for PPS does not pass.
So we keep MECA open?
Yes, and I remind you that we have no option on the floor for people personnel services as of...
I just want to say in regard to MECA too, this comes up every month. And our employees are always concerned about should they put their child in MECA? Should they not take their, should they take it out, put them in another place? And that's one of the reasons why MECA has a limited number of children, because our employees never know if we're going to pull them out. And at this time in April, and March and April, is the time when most parents of childcare services or people who need childcare have to have a place to go by September. So I'm glad that we are not really disturbing the quality of childcare for employees. That's important. But now, we really don't have a place for people personnel services.
Mr. Nostine?
The reason I voted to keep MECA is because I think that we needed to have the discussion that we had. Again, we need to look at things in a bigger picture. The fact that we're always looking at, I mean, we got this tonight. We didn't even have a chance barely to read it or calculate the cost per square foot of the lease. So we just can't keep putting out fires. We need something. So the discussion we had tonight was great. I like the number that Mr. Gorski put forward, when he basically saying that it's almost a wash now between paying for the pupil services and the PD versus the profits or loss of MECA. But I really want to make it a point that I wish that this board would stop saying that MECA is profitable. Because that's my biggest concern right now, is that we're misleading the public. If we actually factor in the costs, I know we've had this discussion a gazillion times about general accounting principles and practices, about where to put the line item for pupil services. But at the end of the day, I've said it 25 times already, and I'll say it one more time, and I promised it'll be the last time, that at the end of the day, if we had to put the trailers, I mean, put pupil services, the cost for this lease on MECA, it would either be a break even or a slight little, at a loss. So that, I think, is imperative that we know. But I would propose that if we could basically keep this, even though it may mean moving again sooner, I think that we just may, we would want to only go, I would be willing to support this resolution if we said only three years. Because we are under the gun. I totally get that. June 30th will be here very soon, and they need a place to go. It's not fair to the employees, it's not fair to the teachers for professional development. And we need to provide, and that's our job. So I just, I would be very happy to support this if we could promise that we won't go more than three years on the term.
Madam, for clarification purposes, the resolution did say for a term not to exceed five years, and we will present the options to the board in closed session. So if it pleases the board, I believe this resolution is sound the way it's presented. And we can still present, under this resolution format, lease options of five years or less.
We're in a situation now where, and I think the administration at this point needs to defer to the board, we have no place to put PPS as it stands now. So are there suggestions from the board where we can put them?
Mr. Kaufman?
I'd like to make a motion that we go with the one that you already had, not to, not more than three years, where it was five years. I know the way it's written, I know the way it's written.
No, I think somebody who was on the negative side has to reintroduce the motion.
I don't believe so. That's a different resolution now. He's changed the terms to three, not to exceed three.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Mr. Kaufman's resolution, if I may repeat it, is, it is recommended that the Board of Education authorize and approve Business Administrator Board Secretary to negotiate a lease, subject to the final approval of the lease by the Board of Education, for a term not to exceed three years, with the option to purchase the property of which the lease premises are a part at the end of the term of the lease for the property known as the Monroe Commons located 239 Prospect Plains Road, Monroe Township, New Jersey. The lease shall provide for a term commencing on June 1st, 2014 or thereafter, for the purposes, among other uses, providing space for PPS of approximately 3,750 square feet. I'll move. Second?
Second by Mr. Nostine. Do we need to have a discussion on this, or can we just...
Dare you.
No, I'm just, I'm just, you know, we've had a discussion for about an hour and a half. I think we've covered everything. So if anybody, if there is no comments or questions, we will have a roll call.
It was made by Mr. Kaufman...
And second by Mr. Nostine.
Tom Nostine, thank you. Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman? Mr. Chiarrella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso?
No.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion not to exceed three years passes.
Thank you. And I hope you're gonna...
And I thank you for finding us a home.
Thank you.
Then you can invite us to visit.
Okay, we're still on...
Committee reports.
Yes, we're still on committee reports. Are there any committees that need to report this evening? Mr. Kaufman?
Sure, I'll try and be brief. We had a meeting this evening. We spoke about the summer reading program. The choices for all grades will be posted to the website. How many parents interested in getting a head start on what the summer reading program and the content will be? The material should be up there shortly. We spoke about the 2014-15 course of studies, which was approved by the committee to move forward. We talked about an athletics cost breakdown, which was requested a while back. And just to give you some highlights, we got some information on all of the athletic programs, both at the high school and the middle school as well. We don't really have anything at the elementary schools. But just to give you some statistics, roughly, it comes out to about $899,435 rough costs, which is servicing about 1,212 students. About 80% of those students are one-sport students. About 20% or so are multi-sport students. So it's not a one-for-one, that 12-12 number. So those are pretty good numbers that we're going to be using for other analysis as we move forward in time and looking at budgets and that type of stuff. And we also had a very good proposal by Ms. DiLorenzo and the other, to be clear, the other Mrs. Kaufman, on a summer arts proposal for performing arts. And this would be a program that would be self-sustaining, where it would be for a fee basis, two different sessions, both Session 1 and Session 2, with two different prices for 300 and 500 respectively. There had been some preliminary work done on the program. They have about, breakage, I think she said, was about 70 students, keep me honest, Jeff. We have tentative interest at about 121 students who are interested in doing the program. We have tentative interest at about 121 students who are interested in doing the program. So I don't know if any other board members that were there wanted to, you know, comment on it. Rob? Rob? One of the things we would like to try and do, because we would like to give the, the staff enough time to be able to get notice out to the parents and everything, was to look for the board to basically give the okay to move forward for the, at least the summer theater enrichment program. And I don't know if you have any more statistics on it than I do.
So, everything you said was, was fun. They actually said that they would do, they would do a performance in the stadium, and they would charge $10 a seat on it, and, and the ladies reiterated that it wouldn't be, they could accommodate close to 200 kids if they wanted to participate, so it seemed like a real win-win, and it wouldn't be an additional expense to the board.
And the only reason why we're kind of, again, I know we spoke about tonight about last minute, it literally came to us today, so we're running out of time, we're running out of the school year, so you want to be able to get the message out to everybody that they do have this program, so, do you need a motion from me?
Yes.
I've moved that we accept the summer theater enrichment program for summer 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chiarella. Is there any comments or questions? By Ms. Arminio?
I'm sorry, I missed, was there a cost involved?
Yeah, it's not, not to the district, it's actually to the people that participate. The participation fee would be $300 for a four-week session. Session one would be second-grade students through incoming fifth-grade students, 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. It's a daily schedule, there's theater warm-ups and singing and dancing.
Using our facilities?
Yeah.
And where is the $300 per student going?
That goes to covering the costs.
Including, we won't, we don't rent the cost?
No.
They don't rent the building, right? That just?
They're just paying for the, the program.
It's paying for the person who's running the program and for, or using our facility, you know, whatever.
There's also, I think, soft costs, there are going to be building stages and stuff like that, so they're going to need for that as well. As well as session two, which was a little bit higher cost, that was the $500 for four weeks, and that's for the older kids, sixth grade to 12th grade. I can, did you, did you guys?
Yeah, Dr. Gorman just gave it up. It also, they, they expect after the first and the second install, um, session, that they will put on a play in our auditorium, and tickets will be sold for $10 each, and the more people that end up showing, it's more of a profit which goes back to the board.
Okay, and, and they pay their own insurance, or is it under our insurance?
Under the board insurance.
Under board insurance, so it is, okay.
Any, any other questions?
Well, just, I, I want to make certain that.
Mr. Poy?
In the event that they don't get sufficient students, that this program does not proceed to go into action, and we're left holding the balance of those costs.
Agreed.
So if we approve this, that has to be clearly understood, you know.
That's why we wanted to start this early, instead of waiting another month.
Pending enrollment.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Arminio?
Does the resolution say pending enrollment?
Pending enrollment.
Can, can we add that to the resolution?
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Is that, Mr. Chiarella, would, would that be okay with you?
Sounds great.
Yes.
So noted. Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Koleponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Oh, one last thing, I'm sorry, I forgot about it. TAG, we, we had another conversation about TAG this evening, the, the group wanted the board to move forward with a pilot next year for clustering students, and I'm going to punt this over to Jeff, who knew that I would be doing this, so that he can explain to everybody exactly what that is.
Okay, the pilot would be for cluster grouping for the extremely gifted children, we believe they're 1% to 2%, and that they would, they are, would receive an instructional setting that would meet their needs on a regular basis in a flexible, regular classroom. So we were going to pilot it at the fourth grade level in the three elementary schools with four different teachers, and we were talking about just grouping or identifying the extremely gifted children, and infusing them in a mixed ability classroom in a structured environment, differentiating and scaffolding to meet their needs, not changing the curriculum or giving them other things, but providing a flexible grouping environment for them. And this is a practice that is done in other school districts, it's considered a best practice in gifted and talented education, and we believe we are not servicing or meeting the needs of those extremely gifted and talented children. There is more to the proposal that we are continuing to talk about at Curriculum Committee, but that is the only one that is pending possible implementation in September.
Yeah, as Jeff mentioned, we are looking at revamping the entire program.
Say that, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry.
I, I just didn't, you said it fast.
Yeah, as Jeff mentioned, we are looking at revamping the entire program. This is just a piece of the, I guess, TAG component, that's during the school day, it's, it's not after school, it's clustering the talented and gifted students together for social and other differentiation, I'm not the educator, you know, they're all nodding over there.
And it's a pilot.
Differentiation benefits and stuff.
Sort of like what Rita Osterberger wanted to do.
Rita would support this.
Rita would support that.
Yes.
Is, do we need a special teacher, special staff for, for these kids?
We believe we have the staff.
Okay, thank you.
But, but to be clear, some of the revamping in the future states may, may need some PD.
Yep.
Okay, any other committees? Mr. Preziosso?
Finance committee Wednesday, the 23rd, and talked about the safety grant, the $48,000 that Mr. Tagg is going to use to replace the alarm system in Applegott, and also, we considered the MECA rate, which you know we didn't approve, and also, we spoke about the final budget and the status of the education aid bill for Monroe, and I guess that's your job, Mike.
Would you like an update?
Sure.
Is this the big one?
No, I'll be brief.
Oh.
Had a conversation with Mr. Jim Hooker, who is the Chief of Staff for Senator Greenstein. S-2307 and A-3478 was, which was the district-prepared in-house legislation to address the shortfall in state aid funding, which was a rifle shot at getting something approved, and it had the most probable chances, which made it through the Senate Education Committee last year, and then died at the conclusion of the, the term, has been reintroduced. And the new bills are, Senate bill is S-272, and the Assembly version is A-1500. This affords a district full funding under the current School Funding Reform Act of 2008 for those districts with seniors populations of greater than one-third. And, you know, we are optimistic, as is Senator Greenstein, that these have a shot, and we will continue to keep the pressure on. There's information about these bills on the website, and as we've asked the public's assistance in the past, if you write your congressmen and women, and your senators, it, it puts more of an emphasis on the educational issues here in Monroe. We did hear back from numerous different people last year that the letters and the information we put on the website was successful, at least getting into the ear of our representatives.
Does that conclude your report, Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Any other reports? Okay, Dr. Hamilton, would you like to do yours?
Oh, yes.
Good evening, all. I'd like to share a little information with you this evening regarding our recent recognition as being one of the best high schools in the country, and making the top 100 in the state, according to U.S. News. And we just have a very short presentation to share with you this evening, just to kind of explain that process and where we are. And while we're, we're doing that, I want to take this opportunity to commend Mr. Goodall and the staff here at the high school, but also acknowledging the work for, the work of, and input of all the elementary and middle school teachers and staff members in the district, because kids don't just pop up at the high school, they have the opportunity to be, their, their foundation is set at the elementary and middle level, so everyone needs to be a part of the celebration and acknowledgement. So U.S. News World Report indicates that, and we actually have access to this logo now that's on our website, and it's celebrating success, U.S. News World, U.S. World News, and World Report. So the Monroe Township High School 2004 Silver, Silver Award, and the criteria is as follows. To determine whether or not each school students are performing better than statistically expected for the average student in the state, reading and math results for all students' high school proficiency assessments are taken into consideration. The second part of this process is to determine whether or not the school's least advantaged students, black, Hispanic, and low-income, were performing better than average of similar students in the state, and that's looking specifically at the subgrades, that, subgroups that we are required to report in our state assessments. And thirdly, college readiness performance, using advanced placement test data as the benchmarks for success. And you know, we shared previously with you our recognition by college boards with our work on the AP testing. New Jersey ranking, and when looked at our ranking across the state, we ranked 39 in the top 100, and this is the first time in history Monroe Township has made this report. And our national rating, we're 1,500 out of 31,000 schools nationwide, putting us at the, in the top 4.8% of schools reviewed in the 50 states and the District of Columbia. Our state ranking, 76 high schools were ranked in New Jersey out of the 31,000 reviewed, and Monroe, again, ranked 39. Collaborative district efforts, so some acknowledgements pertinent to our celebration this evening. Thank you to the Board of Education for your support and to let us do the work that helps our students. Thank you to Central Office for bringing best curricular, instructional, and technology practices to Monroe Township. To the high school administration, teachers and staff for raising the bar. Our pre-K through eight schools, schools administrators, teachers for preparing our students for high school. And last, and certainly not least, a special thank you to our parents and communities for supporting our great school system. And the reason I think the celebration is particularly important tonight is because two years ago, we were hearing from our teachers, too much, too much, too many things going on simultaneously, how do we manage this all? And I want to again acknowledge the staff for believing in the vision, believing in the initiatives, in spite of some of that resistance that kind of got us here this evening.
And there'll be fireworks in the parking lot after the board meeting.
That's great news for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to thank you, and I just want to commend Mr. Goodall and, and all the administrators for a job well done. Number 39 in the state and 1,500 in the country does not happen by accident, and we've heard a lot of nonsense over the last couple of years, everything from we only graduate 54% of our students to, I don't even want to go into it and give any time or effort into the nonsense, but the bottom line is, this is, this is concrete, this is real, this is something that has to be celebrated, and this does not happen by accident. This happens because we have great administrators, great teachers, and people who know what they're doing, and they work hard to do it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it starts from the top down, Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you.
So it's, it's been a lot of your influence on everybody, and I, I just want to reiterate what you said, that I know that the staff has been very stressed out the last few years with all the new initiatives and the mandates that we have, you, have set on them, and I, I think this is their, the, the cream of the crop, this is, this is their, their efforts, this is what they have accumulated, and I think, you know, everybody should be thanked and, and give our congratulations to Mr. Goodall and the, and the high school staff to also.
Is Mr. Goodall here? Is Rob here?
Oh, well, come up front, Rob.
Yay.
So, Rob, what has the climate been like at the high school since this report was released?
The first reaction was, that's it, right? And I said, no, no, you're never satisfied, but I think having the recognition, it being out there for the community, for us to celebrate, I think it's been, you know, it was a great week when we announced that, and we know we still have a lot of work to do, we're never satisfied, and I just wanted to thank Ken and Jeff and Mike too, because they pushed me in a different direction to help lead the school. I had, you know, the job of opening the school, and then as we were transitioning, and Ken re, especially Ken, refocused me in another direction, and along with the teachers, it really is about them, what they did with the kids. We are where we are, so congratulations to everyone, it's been a collaborative effort, and I love being a part of it.
Great, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report this evening. We have two resignations or due to retirement that will be a grave loss to our district, Mr. Rob, Robert Millay and Mr. Doug Glassmacher will be retiring, and these are two folks who have made a tremendous contribution to our district, and they will be both very difficult to replace. But it is recommended by the superintendent to the board to approve personnel items A through I by roll call vote.
So move.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Braverman?
I see Amy Antellus's name in front of you. That's.
That is to I?
I or M, maybe.
I'm sorry, P, A through P. Thank you, I need to amend that. It's recommended by the superintendent that the board approve personnel items A through P.
So move.
Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton?
I wish we could, I tried.
None? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman? Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman? Absent. Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes, except I recuse myself on item P, since I am a close friend of one of the people mentioned there.
So noted. Mrs. Koleponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Action Items A through P passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Board Action Items, Madam Board President, members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that Board Action Items A through I be approved by roll call vote.
So move.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Nostine, comments or questions? Mr. Preziosso?
Could you explain D to me, please? The Avid implementation?
Sure, this is annual training, the renewal of the contract for Avid, which includes the training, the registration for the middle and high school, and the participants to continue their training at the Avid Institute this summer.
Anyone else? Ms. Arminio?
Yes, last week, I, I mentioned it, but I said I'd wait for this week, sorry it's so late, everybody. But in the budget, I saw $210,000 that was supposed to be for a section train, is, section that had, I think was from Avid, could that be explained tonight?
Sure, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Thank you, Mike, there's the explanation, unless you want me to talk on it, Mike.
And, and that's not included in this one at this time?
Well, the 17% in the budgets in the sixth class, it's not exclusive to Avid.
Might as well just reiterate that.
Just reiterate that?
I do, I don't, I don't have the page in front of me, but I do believe what you're referring to is the additional sections.
Yes.
So, Mr. Goodall, during, due to scheduling, electives, the middle school, whenever there a teacher needs to take an extra additional section, that's what that number is, it is not exclusive to Avid at all. Avid is actually a very small part of it.
But it is included in that, so I can get, I can get a read off at another time.
Yeah, so that would be the, the extra teaching.
Thank you, that's sufficient, thank you.
Mr. Nostine?
With regard to G, was, was that something that we already discussed in closed session?
No, this is a, this occurred since our last meeting. I will update you on, in closed session tonight.
Anyone else?
And just one more.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes. On regulation 8441, I just wanted to be. On regulation 8441, I just wanted to be clear that we are, our policy for 8441, pediculosis is according to the standards from the medical authorities?
It is.
And the state?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then we will have a roll call.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mrs. Koleponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through I passes.
Thank you.
And before I conclude my report, I just want to share with the board, I mentioned it in your confidential, that we will be hosting a, a visit from, representative from the State Department of Education, Department of Innovative Programs. They're interested in seeing firsthand what's going on here in Monroe, that we have been so successful lately. So we will be hosting them this Friday? This Friday, here in our district. And we have an itinerary planned for them, and I'll give you a report after I see what they say. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, we will go to the Business Administrator's Report with Mr. Gorsky.
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through G be approved by consent roll call.
So Mr. Nostine, did you move that?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Braverman? Comments or questions for Mr. Gorsky?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes, except I'm supposed to recuse myself on item E since I'm on the board at Middle sex Regional Education Services Commission.
Thank you, so noted. Mrs. Koleponovich?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through G passes. That concludes my report.
Did you want to do your update, or do you?
Yes, ma'am. I'll do it, I'll do it briefly. This was tabled from the last meeting, and we're running late on time, so I'll get through it as quickly as possible. But if anybody has any questions about this, please don't hesitate to ask. I'm sorry, the gentleman left who was touching upon this earlier. This report went to John Nemeth at the county, who found this information useful, and it's a lot of this comes from a presentation that was made to the board by Mr. John Donahue, who's the president of the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials. He is an expert on state aid funding, is involved in a lot of legislation, and he visited the district free of charge on a complimentary visit to explain to three of our attorneys, superintendent, board president, and myself, about state aid from a different perspective. As we've discussed before, there's two types of state aids stemming from the School Funding Reform Act of 2008. One is wealth-based, it's called equalization aid. It's based upon income levels and property valuations in your township. The second is categorical aid. Equalization aid is designed to support a district's adequacy budget to ensure the state's obligation of providing resources sufficient for a thorough and efficient education is met. This is how the state defines thorough and efficient figuratively, by creating an adequacy model. It is calculated through first determining, determining a district's adequacy budget. A think tank of stakeholders met with the purpose of determining how much resources are needed to run an average hypothetical school. They define what an average hypothetical teacher and benefits should cost, what an average hypothetical principal should cost with benefits, how many support staff are needed for an average school, what an average number of classified students would be, et cetera. After this full hypothetical model was created, it was then divided by a hypothetical number of students to create a rate per pupil. Additional weightings were applied to middle school and high school students because of increased costs to educate those students. A percentage of at-risk students are also included here at an increased weighting. At-risk is LEP, Limited English Proficiency, and low income. To apply this to varying districts on a consistent basis, an enrollment projection is calculated by the state and multiplied by these rates per pupil and the weighted rates to determine hypothetically what a district's adequacy budget should cost. Next, to determine the state's obligation to fund, was, created a concept called local fair share. Local fair share is a calculation of how much financial resources a district must contribute towards its own adequacy budget. It considers municipal property valuations from ratables and weighs that at 50%. The other 50% comes from aggregate income levels determined by NJ 1040 income tax filings categorized by that four-digit municipal code on the tax return. When a district's local fair share equals or exceeds its adequacy budget, it does not qualify for equalization aid. I point out that in the 1314 budget, our figures were extremely close. And had the formula been rerun for 1415, Monroe might have qualified for equalization aid. But the formula was not rerun, the state universally just gave students an additional $20 per pupil. The second type of aid, as we discussed, is categorical aid. This is consideration by the state to help districts who have a number of pupils that qualify for specific types of aid, such as special education aid, park readiness aid, security aid, transportation aid. It is also designed to inspire districts to operate efficiently, as was the case with transportation aid. Monroe's transportation aid rating is the highest in the county, one of the highest in the states. So you'd think we'd get a lot of transportation aid. But the state limits this category of aid by paying it over a five-year installment period and also reducing it for districts that spend over adequacy. Over adequacy is determined by calculating the difference between a district's adequacy budget that I just described and the district's general fund tax levy. Another very important consideration in awarding state aid is called stabilization. In Mr. Donahue's words, "It's interesting to understand two unintended consequences of a new state aid formula after years of flat school aid. Enrollment, property values, and personal income are critical elements in the calculation of state aid, in particular with respect to what the state requires as a district's local fair share." They are often referred to as hold harmless, stabilization, and impact aid. The pot of money for general school aid is a large part of the state's overall budget, and it does have limits. When proposing a new formula, the first issue generally addressed is to provide that no district receives less school aid than they received in the previous budget year. School aid formula laws require legislative support. No legislator is going to vote for a law that their constituent districts are going to receive less school aid. Therefore, a new school aid formula generally holds districts harmless by providing them at least what they currently receive from the state. This means that many districts receiving funding that is not consistent with their enrollments and local wealth characteristics hold harmless. Adjustment aid is used in School Funding Reform Act, reduces the pot of money for general school aid. Other unintended consequences of a new aid formula has to do with districts that would have experienced increases in student enrollment and changes in their wealth characteristics that would generate significant increases to school aid. Monroe is one of those, by the way. To fund these districts would hamper the ability of the state to fund the majority of the school districts in the state and hold them stable. Accordingly, a cap is placed on district state aid increase. School Funding Reform Act provides a 10% limit for an aid increase if local spending exceeds adequacy. That's in the case of Monroe. And 20% growth limit if the district is spending less than adequacy. The thinking is that in time, these districts will catch up. This is generally referred to as stabilization aid. I speculate that this term means that it stabilizes the formula and the other school district, because how could a district handle such a large increase in revenue? School districts that are stabilized seldom, if ever, lobby for their right to receive their full school aid entitlements. They are receiving 10% or 20% state aid increases when all the other districts are either flat funded or receiving moderate increases. They also have the expectation of receiving 10 or 20% increases in the years ahead. Unfortunately, what often happens is that the school aid formula is adjusted after the first year because the state can't afford to fund it. Stabilized districts do not receive their anticipated increases of 10% or more, which means they fall further behind based upon their entitlements. When New Jersey cannot fund its school aid formula, it has tried to help districts that are spending under adequacy. However, when a district has sufficient local resources not only to fund its adequacy budget, but to expend in excess of the amount, the state only provides categorical aid support, as is in the case of Monroe. The obvious question is, how can the state simply ignore or change its school funding formula? Well, they do so by thorough budget language. The state annual budget law is generally, provides exceptions to the School Funding Reform Act of 2008. In fact, it trumps the School Funding Reform Act of 2008. So in a nutshell, the state has a budget law called the School Funding Reform Act of 2008, and, and it has a formula for how much money schools should get. When the state's pot of revenue diminishes, and it doesn't prioritize enough money out of the budget for state school aid, it holds district harmless at the expense of districts like Monroe, who are entitled to more and don't receive it. And that's the concepts of state aid, equalization aid, which is wealth-based, categorical aid, and the nasty topic of stabilization, which has hindered Monroe and, and kept us from gaining our fair share.
Yeah, I just have a brief question. Thank you for that brief piece. So in, in summation, are you basically saying we're not getting enough aid from the state?
We're not getting our fair share from the state. I'm quite certain of that.
Thank you.
And we're not going to get it either.
And we're not going to get it either because of stabilization. And again, when the state pot of money for schools dries up, they hold their large voter bases stable at the expense of districts like Monroe, who are entitled to more, but their growth limit is capped. S2307 or the new versions eliminate that cap for districts like Monroe.
Ms. Arminio?
Just very quickly, we had a problem getting state aid prior to that Act of 2008 anyway. Is that true? We didn't really get a whole lot of state aid prior to that?
Fair to say, we didn't get a whole lot, but we've received a more fair share back then compared to our colleagues than we do now.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I hope you all got that. There'll be a test later. I just, I'm going to do a brief Board President's Report, and this has more to do, I was going to do it under the budget, but I figured I'd hold it till now. It's the board's role in preparation for the school budget. And it's pretty much two different things. The first is that every year, we do an annual budget philosophy meeting that the board has at the beginning of the school year, and we set parameters for the administration to develop the budget. It is at that time that the board has the opportunity to express their concerns and opinions as to the development of the budget. The second is that throughout the whole school year, even in the summer, every time there's a committee meeting, and there is a recommendation from the committee to the board, and the board acts on it, there's a, there's a piece of that that goes into the school budget. Sometimes it's the current budget, sometimes it's the budget for the following year. There are personnel issues, there are transportation issues, curriculum, facility needs, et cetera. So they get voted on all the time, and they're always part of the budget. The Finance Committee is then responsible for getting regular updates on the progress of the budget, and, and they do that every month. It is the responsibility of the administration, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the business administrator, the supervisors, the principals, vice principals, to develop the budget. It is not the responsibility of the Board of Education to create or develop the budget. That would be considered micromanaging. And the best definition of micromanaging that I ever received was that if it's something that the administration is supposed to be doing, it is not the responsibility of the Board of Education to do it. Each item that is in the budget must conform to the district mission statement, the vision statement, and the school goals for that year. And each budget item must be defended in the budget defense rounds by the superintendent and the business, business administrator, of which there are many defense rounds. And last year, last month, we had the tentative budget, and that's pretty much the last opportunity that the board gets to make any kind of recommendations or changes to the budget. Then it's sent to the county for their, the county superintendent, business administrator, their approval, and without that, their approval, we wouldn't be able to adopt the final budget. So that, that's really a, a quick version of the board's support of how our role in the budget preparation is. So now we will go to other Board of Education business. Is there any other business from any member of the board of it, Mr. Zarneski?
I'd just like to take this time to talk about what went on before, about all the moves that everybody's making. And Kathy, you brought up the good word, micromanaging. We have to be careful on what we do here as a board. We can direct the administration to do jobs. It's not our job to go out there and actually do what we set them out to do. And saying that, I'd like to also take this time to thank the high school staff and administration for getting this high school into the top five in the state, or the top 100 in the state, and the top five nationally. So congratulations to everybody who was involved in that, and I think that includes everybody here, all the administration, and even the parents out there of those students who push the kids a little bit harder to do what they have to do. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Nostine?
Just a couple of quick comments. Again, congratulations to everyone on that great news. When I got the email from Dr. Hamilton, I was having a very crummy day, and that really made my day. So that worked out very well. Also, I just want to commend the, the staff at the high school and the students that participated in the, in the show, the wedding singer over the weekend. I can't say enough good things about it. It was one of the best times I've ever had, and I'm a bit of a geek when it comes to theater, and the talent that was there and the, and the hard work was just, I was, I still can't say enough good things. I called all my neighbors when I got home and said, you got to go see this. So my, kudos to them. It was, it was phenomenal. Also, at the last meeting, I believe a member of the public, Mary Ann Lester, had brought up something about a flyer that she had seen about an active kids' summer program that's going to be going on at Mill Lake, and the, we were told you guys were going to look into that. I was just wondering where we stood with that.
I actually have not seen that, that flyer still.
Okay, I will get that to you. I have it with me somewhere.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Poy?
Yeah, just to follow up on the US News and, and World Report recognition, I had looked at, and you have to do a lot of searching, I found, because they have the information in different places. But I had looked, and I just want to call to the attention of the board, as well as the public, that only one other high school in Middlesex County ranked higher than us, and that was JP Stevens. So I think that is noteworthy. I also found that in terms of all of the high schools that were ranked, using their criteria, Monroe was in the top 8% of the nation of those high schools. Now, keep in mind, that's with that criteria, and that's not in any way to diminish this. But another, you know, the New Jersey Monthly, they'll come out with their ranking, they use a different criteria. So we always have to keep in mind, you know, that all of these ratings that are used, they use different criteria, but it's certainly very, very commendable, and I applaud the, the teachers that helped this to happen in Monroe Township. And I hope that we will give it sufficient publicity, not that we want to encourage anybody else to move into town, but simply to get the recognition that this year in particular, we, we made the AP honor roll, and also this recognition, which I think is really tremendous.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say that I've challenged the prior two superintendents to get on one of these lists. Neither of them were successful. And I, I think we made this list because of your leadership and your optimism, and there's no doubt about it in my mind. But how much better could we have done if you had a plan?
Thank you, Mr. Braverman.
And Ms. Arminio?
Yes. Congratulations, everyone, and ditto with everyone, all the positive things everybody said. I'd also like to congratulate the students, because I'm sure they worked very hard. And I would like to thank the public for enduring on an evening such as this, because it is, I think, the purpose of the board to deliberate in front of the public, albeit exhausting. So with that, I thank the public for participating and, and just, you know, seeing what goes on. I mean, that's part of the democratic process, and that is cumbersome at times. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we will go to closed session. We resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJ SA 10:4, GA 6 through 10:4, GA 21, to discuss the following subjects. Laws of 1975, NJ SA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects. Personnel matters, employees number 001060, 002044, 000500. Personnel matter, the superintendent evaluation procedures. Personnel matters, status report from the MTEA negotiations. Do we not have any? Okay, great. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the needs for confidentiality no longer exist.
So moved.
Nostine?
Second.
Second by Ms. Arminio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? How long? Probably no more than 30 minutes. I don't even think it's going to be that long. A resolution to read?
Yes. Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that the board approve the separation agreement regarding employee 002044 dated June 30th, effective June 30th, 2014.
Second. Is there a second? Ms. Arminio? Comments or questions? Not roll call?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman's absent. Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Ms. Kolpanovic?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Please come up.
Mary Ann Lester, 44 Avenue I. Going back to what I asked about at the last meeting, the summer aftercare, Active Kids of Monroe that's located at Mill Lake School that Mr. Nostine brought up. The checks are going to Mr. Seidler, who's a teacher at the summer rec program, and there's all rates here. So, to say that you need the flyer, I don't think so. You would have to give permission to be using the Mill Lake facility, so you have to know about this. So, can you please explain it? And if Mr. Seidler is, are we charging Mr. Seidler for the use of Mill Lake School for the aftercare program?
I just received the information from Mr. Nostine, so I do need to know this in order to speak intelligently to it. Otherwise, I would just be speaking off the cuff, and I don't have that information. So, I would, I'm going to have to...
Who gives permission? Since he couldn't put this flyer out, so who gives permission for him to use our facilities? Who's in charge of that?
He would generally, anybody who wants to use our facility would go through buildings' usage. They would fill out the application, it would go through the process in the business office, and would be approved accordingly.
So, it's the business office would approve it? So, that would be Mr. Gorski?
Yes, but I don't have any recollection of that particular endeavor. I'd have to log on and check, but that doesn't come to mind at all.
So, you don't know that as, you have no idea that Mill Lake School is being used during July from 2:00 to 5:00? You have no idea about your own facilities?
I have no immediate recall of that. That's correct.
Okay, you need to look into that.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Hi, Bob Zaglarsky, 162 Tournament Drive. You know, in 1969, I became a, I was a music teacher, and when I asked the board for certain things, like an extra bus for safety reasons to get the band to different places, they gave me some legal opinions, and they said to, you know, and they said no. But I started a band parent organization, and I want to tell you, in a year, a lot of those opinions changed when the band parents came up and started asking the board the same question that I was asking. So, I recommend that with regard to the sewer connection fees that we continue to pursue it, you know, I've discussed sewer connection fees with the council for over a 10-month period. It took them all this time to give Mr. Gorski a reply, a response to pass on to me. So, thank you, Mr. Gorski, for your feedback regarding using sewer connection fees, which ends up with the township council so far, to the tune of $46 million. I hope the township officials have sense enough to make a real statement about this issue at their own council meetings, and I'm putting that challenge out to the council right now. But in any event, I've gotten some feedback, and now I feel that the dialogue should begin. Thank you, Mr. Braverman, for asking me why I think the town would share sewer connection fee surplus with the board when the town charged the Board of Education sewer connection fees for this high school, I think it was about $2.6 million, when they were sitting on a surplus of about $40 million. How outrageous is that? Now, I'm sure when they, when you asked, you know, for a waiver on that, that there were some attorneys who gave an opinion as to why, you couldn't get that waiver, but there were a number of other schools in the state that didn't have to pay that fee. I was in, I've been in the public sector for almost 35 years, 22 of which as a school business administrator, never paid a sewer connection fee as a school business administrator to a municipality. And in fact, I wouldn't even pay like the maintenance fee, that yearly thing. Why? It's the same pocketbook, and they're sitting on millions of dollars' worth of surplus. So, keep that in mind. Now, Linda Greenstein is doing a great job trying to get money from a bankrupt state for more state aid. Maybe we can get Linda Greens, I said Greens, Greenstein, Senator Greenstein. I believe she's doing a good job with that, and I support that. In fact, I came down to Trenton with you for that public hearing, didn't speak, but I was there supporting you. I want you to continue that initiative, but I think we should start a new initiative to get this sewer connection fee money from the town. The township has more resources than the board. They have sewer connection fees, they have their own surplus. By the way, they have a recurring surplus because they constantly underestimate their surplus.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I'm hoping that the Board of Education, and I'll be back for another three minutes to finish my statement next month. And thank you very much. Hope to see you at the council meeting.
Anyone else from the public?
Can I, can I just say something?
Oh, Mr. Braverman?
The next time you go to a council meeting, ask them to build sidewalks, you could save us a million dollars in transportation.
Ms. Public?
Curry Masters, and I'm Michaela Court. I just want to say that, you know, again, we spent a good portion of the evening not talking about children's educational programs, but in a positive note, I came with my oldest son yesterday to the Poak Walk, and it was very nice to see how many staff members and administrators came on their own free time to come out. It would have been nice if some of the board members would have come out as well to support the autistic community, because it's, you know, growing in our district, as well as every district across. But it was very nice to see how many kids were there, and their parents were there. It was a free event to families, and it was very nice. So, I just want to put that on a positive note and kind of end the meeting that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Marathon going.
Mary Ann Lester, 44 Avenue I. There was a planning board meeting this week, and I'd like to thank Mr. Ryback, Ms. Arminio, and two other gentlemen that spoke. There's a development going up on Spotswood English Town, Mount Mills Road, and there was a lot of people there. There was a fiscal impact study, which quite frankly was a joke, and there was a lot of people there that gave a lot of input to refute what the fiscal impact was. And I think the planning board will be doing a lot of thinking about that development. And I also went to the basketball game for Mikey for, and I just wondered if anybody knew how much money they made, if it was very successful?
I believe they made over $5,500.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Bob Zaglarsky, 162 Tournament Drive. As I was saying, let's see if Senator Greenstein can help us with this issue. We're not asking for state funding, we're asking for locally generated money. The township has many more resources than the board, sewer connection fees, surplus from new, which is surplus from new housing developments. It has recurring surplus by underestimating revenues. You should see their budget, Michael Gorski. They underestimate their revenues and build up a big, big surplus. You couldn't do that, the state wouldn't allow you to. Not for a minute. They have the ability to finance facilities, maintenance, and construction by a simple vote of council. They voted in, and they've got, the board has no ability to generate meaningful surplus. If you did accumulate a robust surplus, you could put it into a capital reserve account to help fund facilities projects, including those on your Rodgrind program. You can only fund facilities, maintenance, and expansion through school budgets, which does not really keep up with demand, or through a bond referendum voted on by the school, by the entire public. And as time goes by, it becomes increasingly more difficult for voters to vote themselves a tax increase. Thank God, you know, in a sense, thank God, you don't have to have a vote for the school budget, because it gets, it's been tougher and tougher to pass school budgets over the years. So, don't give up sharing the township's surplus for the sake of students. The pain of not being able to fund facilities, maintenance, and classroom expansion projects will surely outweigh the time and effort to get the town to share some of its cash with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me.
Okay, seeing no one, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Wednesday, May 14th, 2014, 7:00 PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, meeting is adjourned.